I want to call the July 13th re-ord meeting to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, and the first item is the Oath of Office to our newest members. So Jeanette.
I, Jacqueline DiMarco, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Eastchester Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
I, Christina Gagin, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Education Board of Education.
I, Kristi McCloskey, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Eastchester Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
All right, welcome all. Can I get a nomination for the Office of President? Kristi?
I'd like to make the nomination for Vito Catania.
And can I get a second? All right, any other nominations? Seeing none, any discussion, comment, all in favor? All right, Vito, you are now president. I think you take over at this point, right? Or do we do the other officers? Okay, that works. All right, can I get a nomination for the Office of Vice President? I'll nominate Judah.
I'll second.
All right, any other nominations? Discussion, comment, all in favor? All right, excellent. And can I get any nomination or nomination for the Office of Secretary? Jackie?
I nominate Steve Perjanski.
All right, any second? Cheryl?
I second.
All right, any other nominations? All right, any discussion, all in favor? All right, excellent, we now have our officers.
Okay. I, Vito Catania, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President of the Eastchester Board of Education according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Thank you.
I, Judah Holstein, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President of the Eastchester Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
I, Stephen Perjanski, do solemnly swear, oh, sorry. I, Stephen Perjanski, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Secretary of the Eastchester Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Okay, I guess we move on from here? All right. Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Which one should I not use? Yeah, I'll put this one over here, does that work? Or just turn it off? Mute. There we go. Okay, I was just muting my phone, so I'm going to ask that everyone else mutes their phones in case everybody gets a phone call. If I ever forget that in the beginning of a meeting, someone please remind me or remind everybody, okay? I'd just like to read something, something pretty short that I had prepared for tonight. Just bear with me for a moment. "As we entered a new school year, reflect on the challenges of the past one. Difficult situations such as the global pandemic can heighten emotion and stymie communication, but they can also provide unique learning opportunities, sharpen our vision, leading us to creative solutions. Having spoken to each of the board members individually, I know the entire board is committed to finding these solutions as we look to move forward together as one united community. Going forward, I'm confident we will navigate any differences we may encounter as we work toward our common goal of access to the highest quality education for all our students. As elected trustees, I know we're all committed to achieve this goal through collaboration, integrity, openness, action, and transparency. As always, the board welcomes the community's support and engagement in this process. We'll continue to encourage feedback and idea sharing through both email and public comments at Board of Education meetings. While we're committed to thoughtful and productive discussions, we need to ensure that board meetings are always conducted in a respectful manner such that everyone's comments are both heard and respected. We are dedicated to finding constructive ways to use all feedback to guide and improve our school district going forward. This will allow our students to soar to new heights both now and in the future. Let us move forward and make positive changes together, not by focusing on any differences, but by recognizing the common thread that binds us. We're neighbors, parents, educators, residents, all of one community. We all want our children to be safe and successful. We all want our children to be, to receive the best possible education while under our care. We all want our children to leave us upon graduation as productive, engaged citizens, ready to take on the world. If we focus on those three segments, we will have a great year." Thank you. If anyone else would like to add to that, comment, anything before we hit the agenda, please feel free. Anybody? Yes?
Can you hear me? Okay. "As the sayings go, we are always advised to look forward without looking back. However, this past year was a unique one. As difficult situations have presented struggles, they have also presented learning opportunities and experiences to use to work toward a brighter future. We are committed to moving forward together and with all of you, and to work to heal the fracture in our community. Though people may not always agree, diversity of thought and opinions enriches our community conversations. As Henry Ford said, 'Coming together is the beginning; keeping together is progress; working together is success.' Let's forge relationships not by concentrating on our differences, but by understanding what can bring us together, that we all share a common goal of excellence for all of our students. Let's lean on each other and grow together and not apart. Let's increase the human connections, the empathy toward one another, and view each other as allies, not adversaries, knowing that we are stronger together as we focus on rebuilding after this past year."
Thank you, well said. Anybody else? Okay, let's move on to the agenda. There will be a moment for comments from the public when we get to it, just for everybody who's here. So, let's move on. Appointment of officers. Okay. Who's going to handle that? Or we're going to read it? You want, do you want to read it, Jeanette? Oh, okay. Rob, you want to get us started on that? Yeah, I'm trying to manage two screens here and I can't see. I got to go off Zoom to see the list, so.
All right, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following appointments: District Clerk, Assistant District Clerk, and... Oh, okay, District Clerk. So the first one was from July 1 to July 20 of 2021. Assistant District Clerk from July 1 to July 20 of 2021. District Clerk from July 21 to June 30 of 2022. Assistant District Clerk from July 21, 2021, to June 30 of 2022. District Treasurer, Deputy Treasurer, and Claims Auditor as listed.
Okay. Is there a second on that? You second, okay. All right, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Just for everybody's edification, especially to me, this is a really long agenda, so when we read, when we read the motions, try to, you know, go through it a little bit, say as attached when you can, things like that, because we don't want to keep people here all night, you know? Okay, so we now have to administer the oath of office to our District Clerk. I have to read it to you?
I'll read it to you, it's you, you're issuing it to me. "I, Jeanette Messina, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of District Clerk from July 1 to July 20 of 2021 according to the best of my ability."
There you go. I have to sign down. There you are. Okay. Next, we have our annual appointments. Jackie, would you like to do that? The way I do this is move it around the room in order, so. Yes, you could, you take 7.1. Why don't you do all of 7, 7.1, dot 2, dot 3, and dot 4? Yeah, you could, you can mention the purchasing agent by name and, yeah.
Purchasing Agent Lisa Sanfilippo, Assistant Purchasing Agent Repalda Arena, Student Residency Determination Designee Lisa Sanfilippo, General Counsel Keen and Bean PC, External Auditor RS Abrams &amp; Company, Internal Auditor Naraki &amp; Smith LLC, Records Access Officer Lori Parata, Records Management Officer Robyn Mazza, Freedom of Information Law Officer Lori Parata, Title IX Compliance Officer Jeanette M. Messina, Title IX Compliance Officer Scott Nguyen, Section 504 Disabilities Compliance Officer Noreen Urso, Medical Director Dr. Rebecca Collins, Homeless Liaison Erin McGee, Data Privacy Officer Scott Nguyen.
All right, then you could read the rest as attached, okay? Petty Cash?
Petty Cash Fund Custodians as attached.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so 7, 7.2. I read the whole thing?
Yeah, you have to add the CPSC, the one below the Petty Cash as well, per attached. Yeah, the next list. You see, that's another subgroup.
Okay, CSC, CPSC, 504 Committee Members, Chairpersons, Noreen?
I don't think you have to read them.
As attached.
No, as attached, perfect. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Okay. Parent Members as attached.
Perfect.
Okay.
Now, 7.2, you got?
"Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following designations as attached."
As listed, whatever, as attached, sure.
Okay. Okay, 7.3, "Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby provides the following: The privileges and benefits of Section 18 of Public Officers' Law to all employees of the school district and to all board trustees, consistent with the terms and conditions contained in Section 18, and that the protections afforded pursuant to Section 18 shall supplement and be available in addition to any defense or indemnification protections conferred upon such employees and school board trustees by any other enactment."
Great. And then the last one. Oh, wait, wait, just do 1, 7, 1 through 3.
Okay.
Okay. Any, is there a second? Kristi? Perfect. All right, any discussion on any of those, any questions? Yes, Jonah?
Yeah, I had a concern about appointing the Medical Director, Rebecca Collins. I've had brief interaction with her, and in that interaction, she was supporting masks for students outside. I think one of my goals this coming year is to return to as much normalcy as possible. And I'm not sure that her vision is really consistent with those at all. Is this something we could table or maybe discuss at a different time? Possibly look at other candidates?
Well, I'll, I'll deal with that as best I can. I think, I think the board in general is going to recommend that we follow whatever guidance we get from higher authorities. I think the CDC is probably higher than our Medical Director. So if we ever find that any, anyone within our district, any one of our employees, anybody, is providing guidance differently than the CDC, I think the board would have the ability to question that at the time and do something about it. But, you know, I mean, if you want to, you could remove this one and abstain or vote no on it, but I don't see a reason that we should table it. That's my, my opinion. Any other discussion? You know?
I'd like to, I'd like to maybe comment on that a little bit. I work with Dr. Collins very closely, and she provides guidance and resources from different organizations and, you know, provides guidance to the district. However, she always, it's just guidance. It's, you know, she doesn't, you know, make the rules or the regulations. She provides guidance, we take that guidance in the context of, you know, State Education Department, CDC. So I just wanted to mention that, you know, she's been a great asset to the district this year, so.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would want to comment on this or anything? Yes, no? Yes, Cheryl?
Yeah, I also heard Dr. Collins at one point in the reentry, you know, task force talking about maintaining the masks. That was at the time that New York State still had the mask mandate in place. And as soon as it was lifted for outdoors and the superintendent immediately followed through to lift the mask mandate for outdoors, I don't believe that there was, she, you know, had any objection to that. So we've always followed New York State. And I would, I think that she has been a real asset to the district. I would hate to put her, put her, all the benefits and the good that she brings to the district sort of in jeopardy over a question that's so divisive as, you know, around mask wearing, which I think is a temporary issue. I understand it's a very divisive issue. People have very strong feelings both ways. And again, I think we could take her, her guidance. And if New York State, you know, kicks it to the school districts to locally decide what to do with masks next year, I would certainly be interested in hearing what she has to say. But I think the board and district leadership would ultimately make that determination. So I don't, I agree with you, Vito, I wouldn't table it.
I'll just add one thing is, I know Dr. Glass is going to comment in his report on the recent guidance we've received on masks. So what I'll say to you gentlemen is, we don't have a policy for September yet. We're far from it. We currently have a policy for summer school, which Dr. Glass is going to fill us in on. If there is ever an issue with our mask policy, I think that will be the time to address it by, you know, with the board. So we can do that at that point. I don't see any reason to do this. If you'd like it separated out, we could separate it out if you want to vote on it separately.
Yeah, I don't think this is specific to masks. The mask was an example of how she falls on these issues generally, about returning to normal.
Okay, so would you like it separated out?
Yes.
Sure, okay. Well, let's vote on everything except the, all right, except the section that that's in. I want to, I don't want to fight the section.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sure, I thought you didn't raise your hand.
No, that's, sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
The angle. So my, my question and comment would be, if we were to table that, would we be without a medical director? And for what period of time? And is that, are we allowed to be without a medical director? And what risks would that involve for the district?
To that question, but what I, I agree. I think my only concern would be not having a medical director, A, when we're making critical decisions, not only for the summer, but more importantly for September. We're expecting the state to come down hopefully with guidance soon. While we, you know, whether we accepted the opinion and guidance that the medical director gives or not, we would be without a medical director until we appointed somebody to give us any guidance in that respect. So I think that would leave us in a bad position, but I don't know the answer whether we are required to have one at all times. I don't, I can't imagine we are, but I don't really know. It's a good question.
I didn't think we were going to table it, though. I thought we were talking about separating it out so that...
For a separate vote.
For a separate vote.
But we're getting feedback.
Right.
Enough people want to table, we can table it.
The one other, the one other question along with that is, if we were to appoint a medical director tonight, would that mean that we cannot change at some point within the next, you know, between now and the end of the school year?
I believe the answer to that is, we could always change, but I would defer to the administration.
Wasn't there a contract and item?
Let her answer the question, then I'll go back to you.
So yes, this is an annual appointment that we made, and if you do not appoint someone tonight, we will be without a medical director. I do believe there is a legal requirement for us to have another director. I don't think it's optional. If we do not appoint someone tonight, and we would have to search for another medical director if it's not going to be Dr. Collins, that would include us issuing an RFP, which will take time to draft, take time to issue, take time to get responses, and then make a decision. It would be a process, and I don't know that we even have something in place by September, if it's possible, but given the summer months and people being, you know, with their schedules, it could take a while. However, if you did appoint tonight, it's always within your power, right? Decision to rescind or terminate and appoint somebody different. But I do think that having someone appointed is important. And again, revise that in the future.
Okay, any other comments?
Just a quick follow-up on that. Would we be, if we didn't appoint someone tonight, it wouldn't just be a hustle to get someone in by September, but would we be out of compliance for summer school? Yeah, okay.
I thought the contract was on the agenda. Now I can't find it, but I thought, I remember reading it.
Deferring to them, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question. The contract is under special? All right, so we're on sections, we're in sections 1 through 3, and I think there's a consensus that we want to separate out the one with the medical director appointment. So why don't we vote on the other two? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so just to be clear, this is an annual appointment, and we are or we're not doing a contract?
We didn't get to the contract yet. This is just an appointment of the title. When we get to it, we could talk about that then, yes.
Okay, so... Okay, that's what I was wondering. So that we could at another point decide we're not locked in for a year?
Yes. Well, that's what I said earlier, and that's what Lisa confirmed. You could always change. Okay? So, any other comments before we, we vote on this? And you want to separate it out?
We don't need to separate this one out, but I would like to separate out the contract when we get to that.
Sure. All right. All right, so all in favor on 7, 1, 2, and 3? All right, that looks unanimous, okay. Steve? This one goes to you.
All right. We're on 7.4. Ah, yes, thank you, thank you.
See, I noticed.
"Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby certifies the 2021 graduating class of Eastchester High School."
Okay, is there a second? Okay, you got that one? Do you have a graduate too?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. Aces. All right. Any discussion or not? Anybody want to say how great that class was or what?
Yes, congratulations to the greatest class I've seen. I'm not going to say anything.
You guys had a rough year too, so kudos. All right, all in favor? Great, we're done with that one. 8.1, oath of office administered to the superintendent.
I, Robert Glass, will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Eastern State of New York.
All right, we're ready for the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I have a rapid one. Three major items I'd like to cover for you ladies, welcome our board members. It's just a real pleasure to have you here. I appreciate all of the great time you gave over the technical difficulties. Thank you, thank you for your service. And your willingness to... A little bit of an update on guidance for what we have received. Regarding safety and security, I'm going to spend a little bit of time here. When I sent out notice to, of the incident that occurred back on June 23rd, I said I would follow up, you know, when, as more information became available, and I think this is a good opportunity to do that. So following that incident that occurred at the middle school, high school campus on June 23rd, we've had two comprehensive meetings with everybody involved to debrief the situation and try to... and try to extract all the learning that we could out of that. And I've received, of course, many letters in recent days asking that I reconsider my decision to have the security guard who's employed by Briger Security relieved of duty with the Eastchester Schools. And I appreciate the passion and the engagement and the caring that has been expressed through that process. Many of those emails that I have received have rightly pointed out that there were several other factors to be considered in the situation. And I want to assure everyone that each of those factors was covered in our debrief sessions. Truly, safety and security is everyone's job and does not fall on one person. And here are some of the improvement opportunities that we've taken out of these debriefs. It's clear that we would have benefited from more advanced notice from law enforcement. And we also understand how the event unfolded very quickly. And as the individual had been walking in and out of the roadway, law enforcement had been engaged at a distance trying to keep everyone safe. And by the time he moved toward the school, there was very little time to communicate. Police indicate that a radio call was made just before the individual reached the door, but that notification never reached anyone inside the school in time to intervene. Many of our district radios had been reprogrammed. So it's possible that the radio call never reached the intended channel or recipient. So going forward, we have asked law enforcement to help us by making sure that they call us much sooner in such cases. And we'll be having all of our radios reprogrammed and retested this summer to make sure that all channels are scanning properly. We're also going to have training for all of the individuals who use the radios to make sure not only is everything working as it should be, but that everyone understands how, what the radio settings should be and what they should be scanning, what channels they should be scanning. We'll also be providing the police desk with a list of phone numbers for each school that will ring specific office phones immediately without having to go through the automated answering system, which takes some time. And it's also been pointed out in much of the correspondence that none of our schools have a secure second set of doors to create a secure lobby that would have been very helpful in a situation like this. And there's no question that not having this second set of doors puts even more pressure on the security personnel at the front door to make sure no one gets inside the building until they've been fully vetted. The district had worked with the community back when I first got here in 2019 and 2020 to put together a safety and security bond that was about $19 million and would have completely revamped all of the safety and security infrastructure within the district, including adding secure lobbies at every school. The election date of that bond unfortunately had been scheduled and had to be canceled when the pandemic hit. So it never made it to the ballot. And I want to be very clear tonight while, you know, so many are listening and watching that this district does have a great many infrastructure needs that absolutely must be addressed in the immediate future. And this is going to require bond funding, which we will be working with the community to start addressing. But with that said, we can no longer wait for a bond on these second sets of doors. And we will be using funds on hand to install a second set of electronically activated doors at the current entrance of the middle school, high school. And we will consider doing so at all of the schools wherever that might be feasible. We will also be installing an emergency lockdown button at the front security desk. That's another item that was scheduled for the bond, but we can no longer wait and we will start installing it immediately. We've had several guards and a school resource officer generally assigned to the high school, middle school campus all along. On the particular day that this event occurred, it happened to be a non-student day. And the school resource officer was assigned, who normally would have been at the high school campus, was assigned to Waverly as they were having their outdoor moving up ceremonies all morning long. Given the high concentration of students and families who were outdoors at Waverly on that day, at that time, in addition to several neighborhood security situations that had been of real concern to the Waverly community in recent weeks, the school resource officer was assigned to, to that area at Waverly that had more demonstrated need at that time. Another security guard who was typically stationed outside the front door of the middle school, high school campus, at the, at the time the incident occurred, happened to be a little bit to the north part of the building, and then moved inside and stationed himself inside another set of doors looking outward when the incident occurred. Had he been where the guard would normally have been stationed, he would have been more optimally positioned to intercept the situation outside. But with that said, there's never any guarantee that someone will be outside the front door at all times when an issue might arise. That, that person's not stationed there all day long. So we never know where issues are going to arise and we try to move throughout the buildings. But as we go forward, we will again retrain all of our guards in the proper visitor management procedure, as well as in the proper positioning throughout the day. Also, Elteris, our security consultant firm, will be conducting random unannounced tests of our front entrances at all of our schools throughout next year to make sure that we remain secure throughout the year. And so now I'd like to turn to the issue of the importance of security guards, you know, following protocol. I want to offer some perspective. Back in February of 2019, an intruder gained entry into the Waverly School when a substitute guard did not follow protocol and admitted someone who did not have an appointment. Following that incident, I stood before hundreds of people who were justifiably outraged. And I told them that we would make sure this never happens again. We relieved that guard of duty. We fired the security company. We hired one that has been serving us well. And we hired a halftime security coordinator who revamped the protocol for visitor management completely at that time and retrained all of our guards in this rigorous new policy at the beginning of this school year. That policy was clear. It was written. It was posted. It was trained and it was emphasized. And yet, for a second time, an unauthorized person gained access and put our school into a lockdown. So although I'm not in a position to carry out the work of our guards or any other person other than my own actions, I feel a sense of responsibility and bear, or bear the responsibility for the health and safety of every student and staff member inside our schools. And part of that responsibility is making sure that everyone understands our expectation that protocols must be followed. And, you know, I realize, having observed and been part of this revamp of the security situation here over the last year, that there are some circumstances with this situation or with other situations where people are familiar. And it may seem, you know, like an understandable exception to make, to have someone come in before they've been fully vetted. Nonetheless, you know, I look at this a lot like an airline pilot completing a pre-flight checklist. The primary job of the pilot is to fly the plane safely. And that's the prime directive. To do this, the pilot must complete a free, a pre-flight checklist every time. And it's a non-negotiable. For the health and the safety of everyone, this must be carried out religiously. And customer service, while immensely valuable and important, is a distant second to safety. Likewise, the primary job of the security guard is to make sure the visitor management protocol is followed every time to ensure the safety of all building occupants. I truly, truly appreciate the many different opinions on this. And I, tonight, I just wanted to provide you with an update on the improvement opportunities that will be implemented and some of the rationale behind my decision-making. Safety is my top priority and it will remain so going forward. I'd like to turn now to talk a little bit about goals. I provided these to the Board of Education. I will not read through them, but I just wanted to make the public aware and also remind the board members that these are draft goals. Our, our administrative team has set forth for the district. These are the basis for my goals throughout the year. And I just think it would be good for everyone to know what they are. They really center around four things. First, to create a compelling strategic vision and a strategic plan through evidence-based decision-making. We're going to expand the use of data throughout the school year in many ways. We're going to use data to inform our strategic coherence planning that has begun and will conclude at the end of 2021. The second is to establish a robust curriculum and instructional, set of instructional systems to support that strategic vision. And that's being spearheaded by our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Scott Winn. There's going to be an expansion of systems of support for academic systems of support for students. We're going to be deepening our curriculum and our, the way we teach, our pedagogy, the development of that work in English language arts, mathematics. And we're going to be working in, with our science standards as well. We're going to have a tri-state visit and we're going to increase our English as a, our E N L service through integrated co-teaching model in various places. We're also going to increase our capacity and our coherence for instructional technology, building on the work we started with our instructional technology planning last year. Our third area of growth is going to be to ensure that our facilities meet high standards for learning and safety. We're going to prioritize our needs and develop a comprehensive plan to address what is needed in the district. We completed a building condition survey. And it is very detailed, lays out exactly the roadmap of what needs to be done in our buildings, what the useful life expectancy of all of our components are. And that includes life safety issues and health and safety issues as well. That includes air handling. That includes ADA compliance. That includes, you know, every single component of every single building. And we're going to work to determine the appropriate scope, sequence, and process for dealing with these capital and security needs over the next, let's say, 10 years. And we're going to come up with a comprehensive plan to do that. We're going to work with our security coordinator to develop and execute and report on this district's comprehensive security plan. And there will be, that will be continued throughout the year. The last element is to strengthen a culture of belonging within the district. We're going to develop and execute a comprehensive plan for meeting the social emotional needs of our students in a post-pandemic world. We're going to embrace diversity and inclusion with a focus on unity. And we've already begun that work with our D E I task force and their recommendations will be coming in December. And we're going to continue to build strong collaborative teams focused on continuous improvement throughout the district. And we're going to continue our dialogue with our community. Each of these areas is going to have specific actionable, measurable items that will be laid out once these move past draft stage. So I want to thank everybody for their input on these, everybody I've interacted with. And all of our administrative team will put these up on the website once they're completed. And everyone will be able to see what these are and track them as we make progress on them. The third and final item in my report today, except for one other commercial at the end, is going to be an update on, on the recent mask requirements. I have received a number of emails in recent days asking our Board of Education to adopt a resolution similar to the one that a neighboring district recently adopted. And the essence of that resolution asks the New York State Department of Health to remove the mask mandate for the fall. And at the same time, the Department of Health has said they will soon be issuing guidance to cover the fall, but they've not yet done so. So I don't really know what that guidance is going to ultimately contain, but our intention and legal obligation would be to follow it. So certainly, we want any forthcoming guidelines to be given early and clearly. And we would hope that they would merge the science with the experience of children and their learning needs. And more recently, the CDC has indicated that some of these decisions could be made on local data. And so that sounds great, but it can also be problematic if the criteria for making those decisions should be unclear or arbitrary. And I've experienced some of that already. So more recently, the CDC made, came out with, I think on Friday, with some interesting things for us to consider. And I just want to remind everybody, the CDC doesn't really govern what we do. It's New York State Department of Health. But certainly, we want to take our cues, we hope, from the CDC and that it filters through to state level. Recently, the CDC, when they came out with their guidelines, I think the highlights would be that they made in-person learning a prime directive. I think that was important. I think they basically said it's important for kids to be in school. And that has not been so much in their guidance until more recently. So that's a critical shift that worth noting. They also emphasize that vaccines are a key strategy. Getting people vaccinated is a way forward that keeps us in school. That is something I have not really heard or seen much. They indicated that masks for those who are not fully vaccinated would, would be something they recommend. And that three feet of distance wherever it's possible, it would make some sense. And then again, and again, I think the other piece is that they're, they're kind of looking at us locally and saying it might make some sense to make these decisions based on local metrics and data. My question would be what data? You know, and, and what should those metrics be? Back in the day when they were doing the, when we were asked to do testing and there were yellow zones and orange zones, they were pretty clear on what those criteria should be. But more recently, they haven't been as clear. So that would be important. And then recently, the state gave K-12 districts the ability to use the camp guidelines instead of the K-12 guidelines for K-12 summer school programs. That just happened middle to the end of last week. And we have decided as an administrative team to go with the camp guidelines, which strongly encourage masks for unvaccinated students, but do not require them. So our position that we would be advocating effective next week, because we have schools in session and we need some time to prepare, would be that unvaccinated children are strongly encouraged, but not required to wear face coverings indoors. Children and staff are not required to wear face covering when utilizing outdoor space, which is currently the case. Face cap coverings, according to the camp guidelines, must be worn during bus transportation if you're not fully vaccinated. But if you are, you don't have to. Unvaccinated staff must wear a face covering if they're out at all times while indoors. And daily screening for students and staff would continue. That's what I know about what's transpired just in the last four or five business days. It's been a lot happening. And lastly, the commercial, I just want, in the spirit of the second bullet point discussed by the CDC, that the Village of Toccoho is going to be offering walk-in vaccine clinic July 31st from 9:00 AM to noon. We'll be sending this out to the entire district for children 12 years and older. And that timing will assure that they can be vaccinated before the school year. And so, you know, they're going to be asking for people to estimate the number of vaccines. There's a website that we'll send out and there's certainly no obligation. But this is an opportunity that is convenient. And so we're going to, we're going to pass that along since it's a local, a local effort. Thank you for your patience with what is uncharacteristically, I think, long update, but there were a number of issues I felt needed to be addressed. Thank you.
Before, anybody have any questions on superintendent's report? Well, before we go there, yeah, one minute more. You muted me. How dare you? I got you. Anybody have any questions on this? Yes.
I have a question. I actually have a mask resolution.
Muted?
I actually have a mask resolution. Would now be a good time to present that?
Yeah.
Could I just, I, maybe, would it be possible for you to present it after we have time for public comment? Would it be better to hear? Because I imagine there are some
We were commenting on the superintendent's report first.
My understanding is Chrissy has a, a resolution on masks and mask mandates. Would it makes more sense to read it after the chance for public comment? Because it would provide some context.
Well, technically, that would be
I'm just asking. I want to hear it. I just
I don't know. I, I don't think now is the time to entertain a resolution. So if you have a question, I'd ask the question. But if you have a resolution that you want to bring forward, I would do that after, after we get through the agenda. Okay? So you can ask any question you have on masks or anything. I mean, feel free. Yes? No? No questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the superintendent's report? Cheryl?
I just wanted to ask a question about the safety and security. So you indicated that there would be double doors installed at the middle school, high school campus. And so, and possibly at the other buildings as well. So I would just ask that the board be provided with the, the cost of all those. And, and I'm also a little concerned, I, I think it's really important to be proactive in making sure that we have these measures in place so that we are not creating any unnecessarily complicated or difficult situations like this one. So I'm not saying I'm not in support of it. I would like to know the cost of it. And I also would like to entertain the possibility of pulling out from the original bond, the part that would do all the vestibules in all the buildings as soon as possible. I would really like to put that to a vote to the community as soon as possible, since that will take a while to do. And these conversations about safety and security and this bond that was supposed to go up to for vote in March of 2020. So the timing was awful. But that had been worked on since February 14th, 2018. So this has been in discussion for a long time. Now, of course, in the last year, it, it fell out of, you know, it couldn't be made a priority. But I think that if at least we could take out that vestibule piece for all the buildings and start building those as soon as we possibly can, because we know it's going to take time. So it has to go through state approval, even after it goes to a bond vote. I think it would be worth it for this board to look at what that would be, what that costs, what would entail, to look at the architectural drawings that exist and to decide whether or not we want to put that up for a vote as soon as the fall.
I think this would be a fabulous discussion. And we can tell you what the, we have chased out what that approximate cost is. And, you know,
Discussion, and we can tell you what the, we have chased down what that approximate cost is. And, you know, if we.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Steve?
I mean, I think along the similar lines, I'd also want to know if, is the work we would do now, would that have to all be undone if we were to pass a bond, right? Or would this be taking the first steps in that work? That, I think, would be very important in understanding, right? Is this just, it's going up and then in a year from now, it's going to come down and we're going to do something more permanent? Or is this the more permanent beginning of that?
If I could type, I could type. Probably. Lack of a better term. Because all the estimates would be configured. That's why. It's a good spot to be able to do something like that compared to some other places.
Any other questions? Okay. No further questions. We are up to section discussion items. I guess we just discussed safety and security. Any questions on the goals or goal setting? We are going to have a retreat in the summertime where we set goals as a board. So does anybody have any questions on that process or anything like that? Any discussions? Cheryl, you want to say something?
Dr. Glass, did you say that you're prepared to give us some estimates on the cost of the building of the temporary vestibule or double doors in the high school?
Yes, I can't, I don't know that I'm as equipped to give you what the temporary would be.
The ballpark on that is.
So we're estimating all of it at the high school. About $25,000. I know the door estimate for the actual dispo metal door that we're purchasing is about $9,000. And then other related work. It's rough estimate at this point, it's about $25,000.
And so $25,000, and that would be in place based on your experience with bonds and state approval and construction for roughly how many years? If, if we did go forward with a bond to build the vestibule?
So if, if we were going to proceed with the other plans that we had in place, if it was to build entirely separate front entrance to the high school. Like, I don't necessarily know if that would require us removing that, those second doors, because that would no longer be a main entrance. I can't swear to that, but being that the whole entrance would be shifted, I, we could probably leave them intact. It just, you know, wouldn't have any real use anymore because it wouldn't be the front door. I do want to say at Ann Hutch, it, we, there's asbestos all up in the ceilings. And I, just putting up a set of second doors there is not that easy and it would be very expensive, which is why that was included in the bond. I think green bill also poses some potential issues with just putting up a second set of doors. Other doors will have to be moved and relocated in order to just, the space there is kind of tight. I think Waverly kind of already has a set of double doors there. We would just have to kind of refigure how we would do so. So the high school really always seems to be the only area where we could do something relatively inexpensively and quickly and have that in place for September. So that's, that's really what we're focusing on right now.
If we, if we don't do this, how long would the, and we go through the normal bond process, how long would we have to wait for the, for the vestibule?
Let's say we pulled out, just to do security vestibules, put it up for both, let's say, October, November. The architects would have to do the polls. Right now, they just have a concept, right? They would have to do full drawings and the owners inspect. I would say that's probably a four to six month process for just that and then getting state approval. Could be anywhere from another four to six months.
You're looking at at least a year.
At least a year, probably longer.
We don't need state approval to do it the temporary way?
No.
No. And not, not for nothing, guys, $25,000 to secure the front of that building? Come on, that's a no brainer. I mean, let's get a good plan, you know, a solid plan, firm it, you know, not just estimates. And I don't think anybody sitting here is going to say no to that. Even if we were going to throw it away two years from now. I mean, that's worth securing the facility for a year at least.
I agree.
So let's just, let's get all the information, let's do our homework, come back to the board and let us, you know, let us do whatever we have to do to make it happen. Yeah, let's happen. Let's make it happen. So. And if you come back and it's $30,000, Lisa, I am not going to beat you up. Okay?
I just wanted to clarify or make sure that you understood to follow up on Dr. Smith's question. I think. I was trying to pull up vestibules. Estimated, it's a big escalation of $3.5 million. Went through and the construction manager, I think, looked at all that.
So you really have like $3.5 million.
Right, you have this. Whatever. Site hopefully, or. You know, it's going to take a long time. The millions of dollars it would be, you know, it's called $3.5 million to do all of, that would be the new high school entrance, ADA compliance, new entrance that had to secure, I think the ADA is part of that. We're not 100%, I'm not 100% sure, but I think it helps you get better.
The initial bond.
Yeah. And then, and then, you know, the other buildings would have their vestibules done the right way that they would have been done. I don't know what that does to the timetable, but that would be going to the public in, you know, at some point, trying to secure, let's just call it $3.5 or $4 million, just to be safe and then get that done. I don't know how that plays out with the timetable. Do you have any sense, Lisa?
That's what I was, even, even just to do a smaller bond as opposed to $19 million bond, I think even a longer time to go. But even just to do the vestibules, we're talking at least one year, say 18 months, just to get that done because of the timing with the state.
Just to clarify the sort of expectation, I think I heard you say that the plan would be to use the middle school entrance as where you put the vestibules. That's how we do accomplish that? Or are we still able to use the current high school entrance? I'm not sure it makes a difference. In the $25,000, you know, temporary plan?
Oh, no. So in the 25, so with the first set of doors that is, that's huge now, it's right beyond the security. We're going to insert another set of doors.
Okay. For some reason, I thought you said you were going to not use the entrance anymore and switch to the middle school entrance. Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. For some reason, I thought the stairs didn't look enough. Sure, sure.
I agree, Vito. Seems like a no brainer.
Yeah, I agree with that. I also just want to say, I do think, I still think we should do the $25,000 to secure the high school, middle school, but I still would like us to consider very soon fast-tracking the mini-bond to do all of the buildings to make sure we have secure vestibules. I understand that there's a larger bond that was being floated and that's even possibly expanding. We've got windows, we've got all sorts of things in that original bond. And that's going to take some time. And I'm concerned about holding up the vestibules, the secure vestibules at all of our buildings. So I, I think that that should be a priority for us to discuss and.
I agree. But let's, let's get the information, bring it to us and we'll talk about it. And then we'll get it done. Okay. Anybody else? Yes, no? Yes.
Can I ask a question related to goals?
Sure. We're on that section.
Oh, great, okay. So, Dr. Glass, I just wanted to clarify. I didn't get the opportunity since your goals were sent this past Friday. So do we have an opportunity to really dive in, not now, but to provide you feedback on that between now and when, when would be like a due date that you'd want feedback from? I'm sorry, the goals that you talked about earlier?
The goals, these goals.
Yes.
Today. Starting now, anytime, individuals collectively or however you like. Yes, I, I'm, what I've done, what I typically do is I just. At hand, I kind of provide a structure for you to start with. And you can shape that and push on it and say, you know, I'd like to, did you think about this? Have you thought about that? Why did you choose this and not that? We could do some of this at the retreat too and in other places. But I thought if you had it now, you could, you could spend some time thinking about it. And we've got a retreat on the 4th, so you could be part of it. But I'd rather happen to be, like, everybody understand them, feel really good about them, not locked in stone. In fact, I've been known to kind of adjust them even throughout the year a little bit, you know. I let people know, but I, I will do that. So.
So it's iterative. It's an iterative process then?
It is, yeah. What I'll do is, you know, give you an accounting of how we did evaluation, right? And I'll set it up there. And I want to do more of making these understandable ideas and then put measurables or accountability pieces available on the web. That's how I've always looked at it and I'm trying to get that here. So any ideas along that line you bring out of your expertise or anything like that, I would love.
Thank you.
Hearing your microphone? So I'm going to ask people who are on Zoom, if you're having trouble hearing the microphone, the live stream microphones may be working better. Please go ahead to the link to the live stream and that may help you hear, you know, better if you have any trouble. Okay. Anything else on this section?
Can, can I just, I just want to make sure that I understand and hopefully the public understands what it is that we in essence are telling the administration to go forward with in terms of the temporary doors. We're just doing it for the high school, middle school for now, right? We're not talking about, just so everyone understands, we're not, or are we? That's what I want to know. And so hopefully, the public can understand as well, because if I don't understand it, I'm hoping I'm not the only one, that we're not at this point doing anything temporary at the other buildings or are we? That's my question.
These other avenues first. So that's what we're going to do and we'll fast-track that. We'll let you know what the cost of doing the others would be. We'll let, and we will investigate the process of doing a bond and what that would look like when we, you know, mock that up for you. We could do that as a whole board, we could do that starting with the Safe Facilities Committee, you know, either way. Also bear in mind, in the context of all this, we met with the Facilities Committee and we need to have some discussion about issues of capital planning that are much larger than safety and security. So that's the other piece of this. And, you know, our initial strategy was to, you know, move away from the original bond proposal for safety and security. And so much time has passed now. It's almost time to have a broader rethink was, was what had, you know, bundling safety and security into larger capital needs as well. And looking at that over years and trying to get to a plan. So that's, when you look at my goals, one of the goals is around that. We're trying to get a handle on that. So that's huge for us. I think we have to, if I were to take, you know, that's a high priority goal of one of the four. Really, our buildings need help. They need help.
I have two more questions. I, I'm sorry to monopolize. You're getting like me. Well, wait till you hear one of my questions. My first question is going to be, I'm not poo-pooing it or saying we shouldn't do it, but I want to at least understand that $25,000, that's going to come out of one of the reserve funds that we just newly created, because we have, the budget's already been approved.
Yeah, it's probably going to come out of Ed's operating budget.
Okay.
He's got contingencies and stuff, but it might, it may be that's something else that he's planning for this year.
But it's not going to affect staff. That's what I want to make sure we're all on the same page with. And then the second question is just a mechanical question. You said you thought Waverly only had one set of doors, but doesn't Waverly have the two doors by the stairs? I'm sorry, Ann Hutch, Ann Hutch?
They, they do, but I guess because the line of sight. Doors now, I mean, there is, there is second set of doors, but I guess it's the location of the security office.
Right, she's all the way back by the back wall. But if you moved her desk to the right next to the door, that wouldn't be adequate? Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
I had a cluster of questions about goals regarding curriculum, so either for you or you, Scott. So we are continuing the development and interdisciplinary alignment of K-5 technology STEM library programs. And so I was curious to hear you talk about why we're not looking at 612 development of technology and STEM. We've talked a lot about that. So I'm wondering what, if you could talk a little bit about that choice? And also, if you could talk a little bit about the tri-state visit scheduled for November 2021. So everyone on the board is on the same page about what that tri-state visit is and what the focus is going to be and how that's going to help deepen the curricular and pedagogical development. And I would also just suggest that perhaps the parent portal that I know has been in discussion between the administration and the teachers, so a more robust parent portal, at least for the high school, is something that would enable greater sort of parent support of students and in greater visibility and transparency of student progress. That, would you consider putting something like that in the goals for this year?
Thanks, Judith. So it's really just that, the goal is, the focus will be on that. The K-12 kind of work that we've been doing around technology is continuing. So all of our, the new ed tech facilitators, the Education Technology Committee, all of those things are continuing for the 612. But we really wanted to make a goal to see how the technology program and the library program are all going to fit together within, within that context of the new position coming back.
I'm just going to keep it on the, on the front burner and keep making a plug for, for greater sort of robust curricular development around STEM and technology and robotics at the high school level. So our, our K- So our, our K-5 students who are getting such great instruction with Mr. O'Neal and Mr. Rich have a place to take that vertically.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We're expanding middle school, we'll be changing around some things. We're adding in coding at the middle school to continue that, that progression. And already in discussions, as you know, in a little while on the personnel agenda, you're approving our new supervisor of STEM. So she will be coming in and that's one of her priorities is to help us look at how we can expand our STEM opportunities, K-12, but definitely at the high schools as well. And the second question was about tri-state. So we have been a member of tri-state for a number of years. You'll remember the last visit that we had was a focus on homework. This time around, it looks like that we are, we haven't finalized yet. Well, the visit will be sometime in November. But we're thinking that the visit is going to be around K-12 science with the change in the NGSS standards. We kind of want an outside view to help us kind of gauge where we are with the implementation of the new standards and give us a critical eye on how that work is going and areas that we can improve in and ways that we can strengthen our connection with the standards as we move forward. So that's, that's another piece that's in progress as soon as our new supervisor comes on board. That we'll be able to kind of dig in and really finalize that work and develop our essential questions for it.
And just for clarity's sake, the tri-state visit is a multi-day visit of peer evaluators. So teachers, administrators, technology directors from sister districts in our local region, the tri-state region, right? They come and they meet with teachers, they observe classes, right?
Yeah, and I think the important thing is that this is not evaluative. This is 100% a collegial visit where they're coming with a, a critical eye. We provide them with the essential questions that we want answered for ourselves in terms of our own growth. And they help to answer those questions and provide us with kind of a benchmarking of where we would be against other districts and the region in terms of our growth in whatever area that we ask them to, to kind of view and to look at.
And you will publish the results of that visit, the reports and the questions, the guiding questions you provide and the responses you got to the community?
Absolutely. So we, we will get after the visit. The committee meets and debriefs with all of us personally. But then they provide us with a written report, usually probably five or six weeks after the visit. And absolutely, we'll, we'll put that right on the website so everybody can see what those results look like. Sure.
Go ahead, Jack.
So with the results of that visit, is that something that committees would be working on during the next year? Or is that something that would be on the goals for the following year ultimately?
So depending upon what the results come back as, there might be things that we can kind of jump in right away and, you know, kind of begin working on, or it might be something that's longer term. In past and on visits I've been on, we've made both short-term and long-term recommendations based upon what we've seen. So that could go either way depending upon the kind of things that they're seeing. Or sometimes they even kind of recommend we continue or strengthen things that we're currently doing, which we might be able to fund and kind of put resources to right away in order to strengthen those, those areas.
And is this in, I'm sorry, you said annual or how, how many years?
So the tri-state visit happens once every three years.
Three years, okay.
And then two years after the visit, a smaller team comes back and meets with our committee to get kind of a progress update and to hear what kind of progress the district has made. And then makes some kind of basic recommendations in terms of, you know, how you're doing and what next step should be.
Okay, and we ask them which, like, it could be any area of progress that we want, not evaluated, but.
We choose the topic and then we generate the questions that they want answered.
Got it.
It's really self-driven in terms of it's a truly like a reflective process for us depending upon whatever topic that we want. Sometimes it's a more generalized topic, like last time we did homework, K-12. You know, you can pick a department, you could pick a subject area, you can pick something like reading. Or you could go something as kind of esoteric as critical thinking. And, you know, kind of focus on, on something like that. They're pretty, pretty open to that. And they generate a team based upon whatever it is that you've chosen. So if we do end up deciding to go with science, they're going to put people on the committee that are much more well-versed in science than, let's say, if we chose reading.
And how many days are they here?
Three days.
Three days, okay, great, thank you.
It's a three-day visit.
Okay, anything else or are we going to move on? All right, we'll move on. Cheryl, would you like to move the 11, which is the approval of our minutes? And why don't you do the personnel agenda and the committee on special ed? So do 11, 12, and 13.
Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the minutes of the June 22nd, 2021 meeting. And the June 25th, 2021 meeting. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the personnel agenda as attached. And be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the placements as recommended by the Committee on Preschool Special Education and the Committee on Special Education as attached.
Okay, Jonah, would you like to second that? Okay, is there any discussion on any of those items? And just keep in mind on the personnel agenda, if it's about a particular personnel, we really shouldn't identify that. We could move the personnel agenda. If someone's got a serious question, we could pull it out. And then in exact session, we could discuss it and then we could come back to it. So unless it's a serious issue with the personnel agenda, you know, we would leave it there. So anybody have any questions on any of those three items? Yes, no, going on twice? Okay. Okay, all in favor? Good. All right, Chrissy, you want to do section 14? On the tax warrants, we just accept that, correct? We don't vote on that. Yes, no? Okay, I'm sorry, excuse me, if you could. Yeah, yeah, don't read. Try, try to abbreviate things as listed, per attached, things like, otherwise we'll be here forever. Okay, so you could handle 14. Sorry, I threw the tough one at you.
That's okay. Be it resolved that the Board of Education confirms the tax role of the real property located within the town of Eastchester that is within the geographic boundaries of the school district prepared by the assessor of the town of Eastchester authorizes a tax warrant in the amount of 77, 921. Continue, be it further resolved that the tax collector of the Eastchester Union Preschool District, Westchester County, State of New York is hereby commanded to give notice and start collection on September 1st, 2021 in accordance with the provisions of Section 1322 of the Real Property Tax Law. Read all that?
No. As attached.
Okay, as attached.
I got to do the next one, 14-2, 14-3. And you could do those just as well per the attached. Just, just read a little bit about them to say what they are.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the proposal for legal services from Keen &amp; Bean PC for the 2021-2022 school year. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby renews the agreement with RS Abrams &amp; Company LLP for the 2021-2022 school year. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby renews the agreement with Nor Rocky Smith LLP for the 2021-2022 school year. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby renews the agreement for the Claims Auditor Services with Mal Tilde Abate for the 2021-2022 school year. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby renews the agreement with Hawkins, Dellafield, and Wood LLP for the 2021-2022 school year. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby renews the agreement with Fiscal Advisors and Marketing Incorporated for the 2021-2022 school year. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby renews the service agreement with US Omni for the 2021-2022 school year. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby renews the agreement with Precise Translation LLC for the 2021-2022 school year.
Why don't, why don't you leave 14-1 out? I think that's the one with the one we want to separate, correct?
Are we separating just Collins or are we separating the whole?
Well, we, we could, yeah, all right, just, just read it and then we'll take out what we have to take out. That's fine. Read it as is if you don't mind. So the, you know, special ed-related services contracts. And then we'll just separate out the one later.
Okay. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following special education-related services contracts and authorizes the district clerk to sign them. As attached. Without Collins. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the agreement with Mimasi for the EMS roof and gymnasium renovations? Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the following health service contracts? Attached?
That's fine.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the following warrants attached? Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby accepts the annual risk assessment update as submitted by Nor Rocky Smith for the 2020-21 school year? Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve budget transfers of $10,000 or over for the month of June 2021? See attached? Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following donation? See attached? Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve of 2021-2022 budget adjustment increase in the amount of $24,600, which represents a donation received from the Greenville Elementary School PTA for outside tables at the Greenville Elementary School? And be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the Amendment to Schedule A of the Licensing and Operating Agreement with the YMCA of Central and Northern Westchester?
Okay, great job. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Steve, now the discussion, first item of discussion is we are going to remove the medical contract and we're going to vote on everything else separately. Is there any discussion on any of those other items? Yes?
I just want to shout out to the Greenville PTA for the generous donation for the outdoor tables. That's a really great donation. So thank you Greenville PTA.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, no? Okay, so let's hear a vote on everything except the medical director's contract. All in favor? Everybody unanimous? Okay. Now, do, I'm going to ask this of the board. Do we want to vote on this or do we want to just table it and vote on it after we get further information in exact session or whatever? I'm throwing that out. Do we want to table it or do we want to vote on it?
I think.
All right. So someone make a motion to table it. Okay, that's, that's a fair assessment. No, no, yeah, we'll do that. And then we know that the contract says that it can be terminated at any time. So we're not creating a liability here in any way. Okay, so vote on the medical director's. Let me, I'm sorry? I just want to make sure that Jonah agrees with that interpretation. I'm not a lawyer, but the way I read it is it was a 30-day termination. Do you have an issue with that?
Yeah, I'm not the school's lawyer, but I did just read it briefly and it does appear that we can terminate without cause if Lisa agrees with that.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
That I will support renewing this contract, but I do think, you know.
It wants for the discussion.
We should look into replacing this woman.
Okay, so let's go vote on it. All in favor? Yes, yes, everybody? Everybody? Robert, I didn't see a hand, but okay, unanimous. Okay, I believe that is all we have on the agenda so far. Now. I'm sorry, what's 15? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. It was, as management, two screens is a little tough, yeah. Especially when you're. Okay, for some reason I can't access 15. All right, somebody help me out here. Cheryl, why don't you read 15 for me? Because I'm having a little trouble with the board dock screen. I can't see the whole thing.
Sure. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the 2021-22 professional development plan as attached? Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves?
Yeah, 15-1, yeah.
That's my 15-1.
An appointment of representative of Swiss ship.
Oh, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby appoints Assistant Superintendent of Business as representative of the Eastchester School District to serve on the Swiss ship Board of Governors? Okay. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the attached updated district organizational chart as attached? Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the professional development plan for 2021-22 as attached? Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the 2021-22 district code of conduct as attached? Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the textbook primary resource list for the 2021-2022 school year as attached?
Okay, second. Any discussion or any additions? Yes, no? Going, going, gone. Okay. Everybody as well. All right, future meeting dates? All right, sorry, Judah. Future meeting dates, we've attached to the agenda all the dates for the upcoming school year, starting with our next regular meeting August 31st. Okay, now that I opened that, what's next? Future meeting dates, comments from the board. Oh, I'm sorry, we, we had some new business. You wanted to address something, so why don't we put that right here? Okay, just make sure you unmute yourself.
Do you have hard copies? Yeah, great, thanks.
Okay. Whereas on June 24th, 2021.
Before you read it, why don't you just tell us what, what you're, what this is? You know, because nobody has it front of them. Okay, just give us a little, you know.
Last Wednesday, the Tuckahoe Board of Education passed a resolution that the Board of Education and the superintendent will advocate for the removal of masks in schools as long as infection rates remain low. They sent a letter to the state asking that decisions be based on local data such as infection rates, vaccination rates, and hospitalization rates. I'd like to propose a similar resolution. Whereas on June 24th, 2021, Governor Andrew Cuomo lifted the state of emergency relating to the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas lifting the state of emergency resulted in a rescission of the executive orders mandating face coverings in indoor settings across New York State. Whereas on June 7th, 2000, I'm sorry, July 7th, 2021, the New York State Department of Health lifted the mask requirement for summer school. Whereas kindergarten through 12th grade school settings are still required to continue mask mandate because the New York State Department of Health and the New York State Education Department have not lifted regulations and guidance requiring all individuals to wear masks in schools. Whereas of July twelfth, twenty twenty one, according to New York State, sixty eight point six percent of residents of the town of Eastchester have received at least one dose of the vaccine. And whereas as of July twelfth, twenty twenty one, the positive test rate for COVID nineteen in Westchester County is point zero five, zero point five percent. Whereas of July twelfth, twenty twenty one, the number of active cases in the town of Eastchester is nine out of an estimated population of twenty thousand people, which correlates to point zero four five percent. Whereas it is recognized that local boards of education have the authority to make policy decisions on behalf of students, staff, and residents of their districts, provided however, they must do so within the law and in accordance with guidance from local, state, and federal authorities. Whereas local boards of education have been limited in their ability to make policy decisions relating to mask mandate requirements because New York State regulation and orders have required the continued use of masks inside school facilities, despite the fact that there is guidance from local, state, and federal authorities indicating that such mask requirements are no longer required in other settings, given the low infection rate and high vaccination rate in Westchester County. Now therefore, the Board of Education of the Eastchester Union Free School District urges the New York State Department of Health to immediately lift the mask requirements for kindergarten to twelfth grade schools in Westchester County, given the current scientific information relating to vaccination efficacy, vaccination rates, current infection rates, and guidance from local, state, and federal authorities. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Eastchester Union Free School District will advocate for the removal of the mask mandate for the upcoming twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year.
Okay, I'm going to presume this is very similar to the one that Takahoe did because having read that, I recognize a lot of the language and thank you for your effort in doing this. Before I ask for everybody's opinion on this, I'm just going to give my own opinion. Oh, oh, well, well. Is it a resolution yet? I could, I could still ask for a sec. Oh, you got to discuss it, right? Second, who's going to second? All right, we got a second. All right, I'll start the discussion. I agreed with Takahoe's and I agree with this one. Personally, I don't think we need a resolution as a district and and I'll I'll tell you why that is my opinion. I agree with everything that is said in here, however, not being a an attorney, okay, and not be a medical professional. I, if if I wanted to make a statement from the Board of Education that that I would recommend and I could support, it basically would be your last three paragraphs and it wouldn't include any of the statistics because by including this, and then again, this is my opinion and we're all going to talk this out, okay? When does this resolution not hold water? When the positive cases in Eastchester is nine, ninety, nine hundred? When the county rate is point five, point six, point nine? I think by putting all of that in, you're really taking away from your intent. And I think, I think your intent is in line with my intent and probably with everyone's intent here is we don't want our kids wearing masks, absolutely. And we want to force the people that are providing the guidance that are telling us that they should or should not do that, that we want to force those people to make a decision with enough advanced time so that we could implement it before school opens. You know, the the decision about the Plexiglas, you know, we installed all that stuff over Easter break and on Friday afternoon they told us we didn't need it anymore and it was all in place for Monday. And that was really dumb on the state's state's part. So I think that that personally, I would be okay with the board making some kind of a statement, not necessarily this resolution, but a very similar resolution that says, A, we've got an assembly person and a state senator and we got to put them on notice that we want them to get us a decision by a certain date on what we're doing with the opening of school. And not, not mix in all of these statistics that are really changing daily and weekly. You follow what I'm saying? So I'm saying you did a great job on this and I I support this. I just don't support it as written. So that's my opinion and now I'm going to go to everybody else. Who wants to raise their hand? Absolutely, everyone needs to be heard.
So we started with me since I raised.
Yes, no, you.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so first of all, you'll notice I'm wearing a mask. The reason I'm wearing a mask is because three days ago I was on three different airplanes to Omaha, Nebraska, which does not have the same positivity rates that we do. So I, you know, many of you have seen me not wearing my mask, right? So I'm not an advocate for masks or not for masks. I'm an advocate for responsibility. My one concern with this is the last is the last paragraph also. I think if we're going to have an open-ended mandate to advocate for not wearing masks, I think that's a bad idea because September is a long time away and we don't know what it's going to be. I think the appropriate language might be, if I can recommend an amendment to say, we'll advocate for the removal of the mask mandate as soon as practical or as soon as appropriate. We talked earlier, Dr. Glass talked earlier about the fact that that the state has been ambiguous in their guidance in the past. And just like Vito said, they've they've, there've been times where they've changed the metric and what's the number? And you know, where's the magic number when masks are appropriate or they're not appropriate? And what's the positivity rate? And now we're hearing about the Delta variant, sixty percent rise, but we don't know what the numbers, so many things mugging up the 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 situation to to even know it's going to be in in September. I don't want to lock us into a situation where it's our responsibility to 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 advocate for removal of masks if it's not responsible to remove masks. Once the outdoor mandate came in, this, the very same day on July seventh, Dr. Glass, without requiring a board resolution, allowed outdoor masks. So I think we have, you know, in our hands in a good place that if the state comes back and says masks are optional indoors, it should happen, I'm assuming that it's going to happen relatively quickly. We're talking now it took about a week, you know, with the summer school. But, you know, I I don't think there's any intent to have masks on our kids longer than they absolutely have to. But I also don't think we should lock ourselves into a resolution that mandates that we advocate without limit for no masks. So my recommendation would be to change that language to have those specifics. You know, possibly just as simple as saying as appropriate.
You don't want, I'm going to go this direction rather than raise hands. So Steve, why don't you go next?
So my, when I read this and please correct me on the intent, was the intent is to advocate to the state, not for our own policy necessarily. But my, my only concern would be, well, so so first of all, I think this is, I suspect that we don't need to to advocate necessarily because I think the indications are that the state is going to change their guidance and that they've, based on their recent moves in allowing us to use the summer camp guidelines and summer school, I suspect that this is going to happen anyway. Or something very similar is going to happen anyway. At least to the to the point where they're going to probably get rid of the mandates or or change them somehow. My one concern would be, and this doesn't, I don't remember if this says it specifically, is that I don't necessarily want the district itself to have to make medical decisions. I would much prefer that, whether it's the state, the county, or or, you know, that medical professionals be making health decisions based on statistics and information rather than the district, though this doesn't necessarily advocate for, you know, the school superintendent making that decision. That's just my personal preference. But I think the key thing here, as Vito said, is we need a decision, whatever they're going to, whatever change they're going to make that they are indicating they're going to make, we need it soon and the sooner the better. So I, you know, I think it's by and large, it's a fairly good, a fairly good resolution. And I do like all the whereas's because I think it puts context in that, look, we're looking at the numbers and this is what they are right now. And and I think it's important to say, look, if everything quadruples in three months from now, that doesn't mean that we still necessarily advocate for this. Maybe we will, maybe we won't. But I also view it as sort of a, it's sort of a one time, you know, you send them a letter and then they make their decisions.
You can go last or you can go now. I'll let you go last. You proposed. Jonah.
And so I guess I'll address the comments that have been made. I don't share Vito's concerns about including the statistics. I don't think anything in the, you know, operative, you know, resolution part, I think the last two, none of that is contingent on these statistics remaining the same. So I think I agree with Steve that this just provides helpful context. Addressing Judah's concerns that, you know, he wants to add some sort of appropriateness language. I think it's, as Steve also pointed out, this doesn't say anything about our mask policy or advocating to remove a mandate which would then give us the power and Dr. Glass the power to determine, you know, whatever we think is appropriate. So if the choice is, you know, giving us more options, I don't see why there would be any issue about advocating for that. And I support this resolution.
Cheryl?
Um, yeah, I don't have a problem with context either. I do think context is important, but I also agree with you, Vito, that it is ever-changing, ever, ever-changing. And I don't want to go down sort of a speculative path. I think my, my primary goal is five days, five full days of education for all our students. Fair, equitable, safe access to public education for all students. And so I I'm trying to think about how to account for, a lot of people do feel that the vaccination is an important, really important mitigating factor that has totally changed the landscape. And you mentioned that here, how high the vaccination rate is in Westchester County, I think in, or in Eastchester and in Westchester County, I think we're like sixty percent have had both doses. I think we we have to at least mention and think about families who might be concerned about half of our school population, the young children younger than twelve, who don't currently have access to vaccines. So I just want to put that on the table because I think they're part of our our school community and any advocacy we do or statements we make, I think have to take into account the, you know, everyone's concerns, people's concerns about their children being in an environment where they don't have access to vaccines and they prefer the max, the masks and the many concerns about parents who really feel a great deal of concern about the educational and health impacts of wearing masks, which I, which I also understand, but we need to, you know, it's our responsibility to think about that full picture. So I would put that out there as well. And one of the things I really liked about Takahoe's letter of advocacy was the the sort of ways that the language was tempered to say that, you know, we are, we are advocating that decisions be based on county metrics. I think having those county metrics is really important. Yes, remove the mask mandate so that it's kicked to the, to the superintendent to make the decisions, but it's very difficult. You know, superintendents and boards of education want sound medical ground, right, to be able to make these decisions because they're such important decisions for the health and welfare and safety of all the students. So I I would really like to include some kind of a language in there about, you know, give us some firm county metrics. Where, where do those, what's the tipping point for any kinds of mandates that might, you know, to change? I think that the Takahoe letter also talked about being prepared to be flexible and abide by a mask mandate or other layered mitigation measures if regional metrics necessitate it. It just gives that little bit more breathing room so that we know what we're advocating for and under what what sort of instances. They also add, our point is to have metrics in place that trigger when we can remove the mask as we do when we're in person, remote, or hybrid. I I agree that I think that the state will come down with some sort of guidance for fall. It might not be soon, who knows, because they're not particularly quick on doing it. But if we're looking at other states, local states like New Jersey, I think that mask mandates are being lifted and being kicked to the district. So I appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion so that we're all starting to work through these complex issues because I I imagine that this decision is going to be kicked to districts. And I would hope that our superintendent is in close conversation and contact with superintendents of our sister districts, local districts, so that Eastchester is not doing one thing and Takahoe and Scarsdale and other districts are doing other things so that we are, that we have some sort of alignment. And again, I just, for the the portion of our school population that cannot be vaccinated, I just don't want to discount the concerns of a portion of our community that they might have about not being able to have that really important mitigating factor in place for their child. So I I feel like it has to at least be part of our discussion. Thanks.
Chris.
Okay. Well, I think as a district, it's important for us to put forth a resolution to demonstrate our commitment as a board that we're focused on this significant issue. We know it's been tough on our kids. We know everyone here, we don't want our children to have masks to have to to go to school. We need to do that appropriately. We need to do that soundly, safely, et cetera. So I mean, I I am an advocate for for figuring out how do we update this resolution so that way, you know, we can get everyone to agree to it. Because I really feel as a district, we need to put forth a resolution and we need to figure this out and whether it's, you know, in the end, it becomes ma- mask optional, but you know, we have to abide by what New York State, our our hands are tied, I hate to say, really makes me sad, but. You know, so that that's, and I'd also like to propose somehow or another that we create an advocacy task force that really pounds the pavement to Albany around this item specifically. And whether that comes, whether we bring Takahoe, Bronxville, Eastchester, Scarsdale, all of our kind of surrounding, you know, neighborhood towns together to do something, I'm all for that, to really, to drive it home that we 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 need, we need some change here. We need some definitive change and we need to to figure this out for before September, if we can.
Jackie, I said it again because I unmuted myself.
Okay, so first, I just want to thank Chrissy for putting this together. I think this is a very important conversation to be having because I do fear that come March, we're going to be sitting here saying our kids have been masked for two years. Really, truthfully. And I do believe.
Heaven forbid.
I I agree, I agree. But just to to respond to just to something that Steve said, I guess, about that we do think, you know, guidance will be coming soon and, you know, according to what's been going on with the summer camp guidance. I feel that that guidance probably should have come from the state and from the Department of Health much sooner, so I don't want to take it for granted. So I think it's great to make this resolution to say that we are advocating, you know, on behalf of the district to to give the option ultimately. So of course, you know, parents and individuals always have that option. I do understand that, you know, over the past year and a half, this obviously like triggers a lot of emotions in people and I completely understand that. So I wanted to just put out like a few numbers kind of in a matter-of-fact way just to, you know, discuss it because I know the community has a lot of strong, strong feelings on this. So as of July sixth, ninety percent of seniors have been fully vaccinated. So that's for the country. Seventy percent of Americans age twenty, twenty-seven and over are fully vaccinated. COVID deaths are down ninety percent. So we do know that the vaccines are working. Infection fatality rate for ages five to nine is less than point zero zero one percent, which just to compare is one-tenth the risk of the flu for that age. And in those under eighteen years of age, the infection fatality rate is point zero zero five percent. Also, the World Health Organization does not recommend universal masking. Yes, the Delta variant is more transmissible, but not more dangerous from what we know. And as Chrissy said, the Eastchester infection right now is nine out of twenty thousand people. So a study from JAMA Pediatrics, that was a study out of Germany, a large one, twenty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty children, sixty-eight percent showed problems with masks. So, okay, we say problems, what does that mean? So within three minutes of mask wearing, the amount of inhaled carbon dioxide was higher than what is already deemed unacceptable by the German Federal Environmental Office. So that's within three minutes. Kids on average are wearing masks for two hundred and seventy minutes on average in a school day. So complaints were attributable to hypercapnia, which is excessive carbon dioxide in the bloodstream caused by inadequate respiration. So the effects of this could be rapid heart rate, rapid breathing. So the effects of this could be rapid heart rate, rapid breathing, headaches, dizziness, fatigue, as well as many more very serious effects. From the University of Florida, there was a study of pathogens that were found on masks. So we're talking about Streptococcus pneumoniae, Mycobacterium tuberculosis, Niseria meningitis, Ascinobacter e coli, Borrelia legionella, Staphylococcus pyogeni, Staphylococcus aureus. So that's just a couple of, you know, pathogens that have been found on masks. So with this information of the adverse health effects of masking that we've seen over the past year, knowing that the state of emergency has now also been lifted, all of this coupled with increasing vaccination rates and decreasing infection rates, I personally feel that it's hard to justify the remaining restrictions for this one group of our population that has been deemed to be the safest group for COVID. They are the last group to have many restrictions placed on them. And in, in an environment where we're supposed to be advocating and recognizing the individual needs of students and providing an environment that is the least restrictive to promote productive learning, that I would support this resolution. And also with the adverse health effects, we also have the added effects that we've seen over the past many months of increased anxiety, decreased socialization, even, you know, students who wear glasses, they can't see with the, you know, the glasses fog up, impairing speech formation, facial expressions, and really just not seeing a child's face for a year and a half. So I also do not think that this should be contingent on the vaccine being available to these, these age groups because I just feel that that is a personal decision. And those decisions should be left to the individual and the families, as well as the choice of whether to wear a mask. So in conclusion, I support this resolution.
Thank you. Robert?
So unfortunately, I didn't go to medical school. I'm not a doctor. I don't pretend to be. I don't play one on TV. I don't know all the ins and outs of the science of this disease. My concern about telling the state that they should pass this buck down to the district is that Dr. Glass, last time I checked, didn't go to medical school either. And we just spent a little bit of time on the discussion of possibly not keeping our medical director because we didn't like the guidance from somebody who went to medical school that they were giving us. So I'm concerned about having the decision pushed back down to the district and having the district have to make this decision rather than the Department of Health and people who are experts in the field make the decision. So that's the only reason I'm opposed to the concept of a resolution telling the state, unmask our children. I don't think I'm qualified to make that decision. I'd rather be expert maker. But beyond that, I don't have a problem with the concept of saying, I personally might like the children unmasked, but I just don't think it's a position that the district should be advocating for. Because what's going to happen is it's going to get pushed down to us and we're going to be as divided as we have been this past year on an issue of whether we should unmask our children or not. And I just don't think that's the place we want to be or should be. I think that's a better place for the experts to make. And that's-
Okay. I didn't miss anyone, right? I'm, I'm sorry. Do you want to go back or? Sure.
So I just, I think that it's important to just recognize that this is just giving the option to the parents and to the individuals and to the families. You know, of course, anyone that's more comfortable or feels for whatever reason, you know, still has the option to wear a mask. But I do feel that it's important at this point, just to have the option to the families.
I just want to add, like respond also to, you know, I actually totally agree with, with Jackie that parents should be the ones making the decision about vaccinating their children and they should ultimately, ideally, be the ones to make the decision about masking. So if the New York State lifts its- So I just, but I think that, or children, older children. I mean, we had the mask mandate lifted for outdoors before the eighth grade and high school graduation. And there were still some eighth graders and high school seniors who were graduating who chose to wear masks and it wasn't any problem. It wasn't an issue. It didn't seem to be a stigma. In fact, the young man who sang at the eighth grade graduation lowered his mask in order to sing. He didn't seem at all troubled by making that choice. So I think that we can give that decision over to individuals once the state lifts the mandate. However, I do, for me, I don't, the only reason I don't, well, the reasons I don't approve or, you know, support the resolution as written is I think it needs some of that language about family choice around masking, which was in the letter from Takahoe. I would want to include that. And I would want to include the language about trying to push the, the New York State Department of Health, the governor's office, to be providing those metrics and a great deal of clarity. So that would make it so much easier for our districts to be, not just our district, but all the districts in our region, to be on the same page and to be able to feel confident and not to have this be a divisive, a divisive issue anymore. Because I think it has really been a divisive issue. So I would want some of that kind of language in, and I would really like to, you know, send a letter like Takahoe did. I think that's a nice idea and maybe it's a letter that community members want to send as well.
Okay. Chrissy?
The language from the resolution is very much like the Takahoe one. So it's only to, to approve that we, as a district, can advocate. So I don't really understand why we would have to change the language in the resolution because it's only to say that yes, we're going to advocate. It's not, it doesn't include the specific language that would be in the letter. Takahoe, this was their resolution. Then they sat together and wrote the letter, not, not specific with the language from this resolution. So this resolution is just to approve that we, as a district, will advocate to the state. Now, I, I do think that the state should give the decision-making to the parents. And I, I think that it needs to be optional because we were in a state of emergency. And when, when we were in a state of emergency, it is understandable that certain mandates would take place. We are no longer in a state of emergency. That has been lifted. So at this point, the decision should be to the parents. And, and I think we do have to follow the metrics. And if we're looking at the numbers and the numbers are so low, then the parents have a right to say whether or not they want their child's mask. And certainly if they want their child mask, absolutely. But if parents do not want their child mask at this point with the numbers so low, I really feel like it is not the government's job to step in at this point and, and say that kids need to be masked when these numbers are so low. And I think that, God forbid, there is a spike. Governor Cuomo is going to step in and put a mandate again. So I don't think it's necessarily up to the district to say, oh, the numbers are going up. Governor Cuomo is going to do that. He's going to step in and he's going to put that mandate there. So at this point, I think that we need to advocate as a district to the state to put the decision back in the parent's hands.
Okay. We've heard from everybody, right? I'm, I'm going to take round two now. Based on what everybody has said, there is very little I disagree with that anybody has said, okay? When I first started off, I had said that personally, I didn't like including how low the numbers have gone in our letter. And I think most people who know me and some people who are going to get to know me a little better in this role are, I'm a pretty straight shooter, okay? And, and I say what's on my mind. And my opinion here still stands that if you tell somebody that you're advocating for something because numbers are at a certain level, you're opening the opportunity for them to come back and say, well, we're going to put a mask mandate on because now there are 25 cases in Eastchester. When as Jackie said, there could be 1,000 cases in Eastchester. But if they're not as dangerous as they were a year ago and they're treated better and there are no deaths, cases don't mean anything. So putting, putting that there are only nine cases in Eastchester, to me means nothing. I, I don't think it adds any value to this resolution. And believe me, I want a resolution that we could all agree to that puts the decision in parents' hands, okay? Because it, you know, we work for them, okay? We work for the parents. They're our customers in this situation. We shouldn't be making health decisions for parents, okay, as a school district. So I really don't even want the letter to say it should be a school district decision. I say we should force the state's hand and get them to say that they recognize that the numbers have gone down, the deaths have gone down, the treatments are better. The risk to children is far, far, far less than it is to senior citizens, okay? And, and I think personally, I think we could all come to a resolution that we all agree to, okay? That, you know, I, I think would be the best thing to do. And as I think Cheryl said, we should then share it with some other districts and see if they could get them to buy into it as well, because we shouldn't be doing this alone. As Rob said, we're not, you know, you went to pharmacy school. I didn't even go there, okay? But I, I don't think we should be in a position where we're making medical decisions for parents, especially about their children. So I don't know, I'm throwing out the idea that why don't we, rather than vote on this the way it's written, why don't we put a small group of board members together to try to come up with some language that incorporates what everybody here said, okay? And we revisit this and, and we definitely do, we definitely have to put out a statement to the state. Okay? It's just a question of, I personally don't think this is exactly the way I'd like to see it. So I think he had his end up first and we'll go this way. Steve?
So I, I think it's important, so Chrissy, thank you for the context, which I missed initially when I read it, in that if I understood you correctly, this is not the language that Chrissy's proposing we send to the state. This is just the language to say, we as a district want to advocate and so we're going to advocate. It's not saying that this is what we're going to send to state. I think the idea is that we're, we're just saying now, we want to advocate for this and then let's sit down and figure out what we're going to send, right? But not that this is what we're going to send.
Right.
Which I think is important.
I don't want to cut the line, but just-
That's a, that's a very valid point. I didn't, I didn't read it that way originally, but that's, go ahead.
Just about that, I, I believe, I, I watched the Takahoe meeting and I believe that the superintendent read the letter that she and the board president signed off on. And then the, the, so they, they were, they were presented concomitantly, which I think would be useful because then you know, oh, the resolution is resolving that we're going to advocate and this is the language we're going to use to advocate, right? So the letter was released at the same time. And so that might also, I think that creates, and there's agreement between the superintendent and the board as a united front, you know, making, although the board was not 100% in agreement on the resolution, but they, they're, both were presented together.
Okay.
Sorry. No, that's okay. That's okay. But can we tonight, can we tonight? And Vito, I know you've got concerns with one of the wheresas here because we're stipulating right now what the cases look like, if we stricken that line.
Let's go through it line by line and see what everyone agrees to and then boom, we'll be done.
Because I think as a follow-up, you know, Cheryl, to your point about having a letter, which I think is great, but I, I don't want to, by not having the letter prepared tonight of what parents can take out to send to Albany, I still would like us to try hard to, to figure out a resolution to-
I'm, I'm all for that. Let's, let's go through it line by line. I'm sorry. Rob?
I, I guess I'm just a little confused though. So if the concept is that we're going to put a letter together, then why do we need the resolution to put the letter together? So that's, I guess, my initial question. I don't understand why, and we, we have the right to put a letter together anytime we want regardless of a resolution. So I don't really understand the purpose of the resolution. I, I guess that's my question first.
Okay. I think, you guys are the lawyers here, okay? And Lisa, I'm going to throw this over to you as far as the, the, what does it mean to pass a resolution? Is that basically saying that we are all resolved towards a common goal, being the last line, which is to advocate for the removal of the mask mandate? You know, for the upcoming school year? Is, is that all it means? What, what are, what is the legal meaning of us passing a resolution?
I'm not an attorney, but in my opinion, it would be that that's the typical-
That's what I would think, but I'm going to ask these two guys.
I'm not a lawyer either, but I think it's also, there might be some force behind a res- I'm not sure why we need a resolution. Either, I'm not 100% there, but there might be some force behind it in terms of directing the superintendent toward what we, what the board is promoting he advocate for. No? Because the superintendent is in a position to-
I want to go to the lawyer. John, what do you think? What is, what does it mean? What do you think? As not being the district's top-
As, as not, as not your lawyer-
Right.
I would advise that this, you know, this is a public document that's, you know, we're resolving to urge the state department. So this, you know, even before we send a letter, we can at least post this and, and say to the state that we've resolved to urge you to do this. And, and like others have said, I think this, that's, you know, what our position is. And, and maybe we could add that, you know, in, in addition to the Board of Education, you know, we'll advocate, we can also say, and the administration will advocate.
Well, they work for us.
Yeah.
So if we, if we advocate, they have to.
All right. Well, then, then, then I have no addition.
Rob, you agree with that or no? What's your take on the resolution? Do we need a resolution to say this is my question?
I, I think that's, I don't think it's that simple a question. So that's why I asked it, right? Because I don't think, I think we can advocate for, regardless of whether we have a resolution. I think what it does is it would be stating our official policy that we would then be guided by. So I think it publicizes our official stance on this position. And I think that would be the purpose of a resolution in general, is it set forth what the board's policy is.
Right. We've advocated for plenty of things with that resolutions, right? We got the, we got the funding, you know, the extra funding for the foundation aid. Before that, we had advocated for GEA, you know, gap elimination funding. I mean, we've advocated for many things without a resolution. My concern is with the resolution is, I have actually another concern that, that I thought about as you're talking about it is, it creates a perception that we are forcing administration to do something that I don't think is actually being asked to do, that we're asking administration to do, right? I'm already hearing people interpret things like this to say, well, that means that as soon as they release the mask mandate, the masks are off. And that's not what this says. And I don't even think that's necessarily the intent of what this says. I think that's going to happen anyway. But I, I just, I think this creates confusion in what we're advocating for or what we're passing as a resolution to the public. It makes a statement, but it makes a statement that may actually be different than the statement we're trying to make.
Jackie, your turn. Sorry. I had to do it again.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify a few things. So to Judah's point about past advocacy that's been done, I wouldn't imagine that there would be a difference of opinions with advocating for state funds, as an example. So I feel that this would be important and to have the language be clear so that everyone understands that we're all on the same page advocating for the choice to go to the parents and to the individuals and to, you know, that family, if it's, you know, a minor, whatever. So I, I also feel it's important to advocate to the state because we saw that confusion that happened that Friday afternoon where the- where the Department of Health tried to say, on Monday, masks will be optional, and then on Sunday afternoon, Cuomo said, not so fast, that didn't come from me. That caused a lot of confusion. So I really would not take it for granted that advocacy on many districts' parts would not have an impact, hopefully, on the state. And just, um, to clarify, Vito, are you saying that you think the language should be changed so that we're not including statistics so that it's not contingent on numbers going up or down?
Correct.
That we are advocating that the choice is up to the parents and to the individual completely? I just want to be clear.
I want to take the numbers out. I want to say, the active cases in the town of Eastchester is greatly reduced from the past, things like that. I don't want it, because I don't want someone to throw this back in my face with that, well, you said it was nine and we don't need masks, now it's up to 900, and we do need masks. Because I'm not in a position to decide if nine is low enough, or 900 is high enough.
Right, I think we need to take out the ambiguity that would go toward the state saying different things.
I don't want to be criticized because of a changed number.
Right.
That's, that's where I'm coming from. I don't have a problem with any of these statements, okay? I have a problem with tying them to specific.
Okay.
You know, they hit this level, so we say this. That's, that's where my issue is.
Okay.
But that's my issue. I don't know about the other eight people here. Uh, Christie?
But, um, but this is not the letter that's going to go to the state. This is simply to say, do we, as a board, agree to advocate to the district to drop the mandate? That's it.
I think we all do, but my point is, you, you create a resolution like this, this is a foilable document. Someone could use this against us. Someone could turn around and say, ah, Eastchester's 900 now. And they're going to come here and hit the mic, and they're going to yell at us. They're going to say, it's up to 900, we want the masks back. I don't want that. Do you know what I'm saying? I want to say, hey, the number got down low enough, or was significantly lower than it was. I'm absolutely fine with all of this language. I don't want the individual numbers. But that's only me, guys. This is a nine-person decision, okay?
Sorry, just one more thought. Um, so I just wanted to, I guess, say that basically, at the end of the day, if we're debating the other side of this, which would be to not advocate, we're basically saying that I have, like, I have a right to tell Christie what you want to do with your child.
Mm-hmm.
So really, we're just saying that it's up to each parent for their child. So I can't imagine that there would be a huge issue with
Yeah, that's, that's not what my concern is. My, my concern is that someone could turn around and use the numbers against us to say that, why did you advocate for this one? This happened, now I want you to advocate to put them back. Do you know what I'm saying? That's, that's how I'm looking at it, okay? And like I said, this is not my decision, this is our decision, so who else? Steve?
I, I just, I, I do want to disagree with that statement. I don't think that that's what the other side is necessarily saying. Um, if people oppose this, I don't, I don't think that they're necessarily saying that I should tell you what to do. But I would also like to point out that there's a lot of context here that we are told what to do. My kid can't walk into this building without all of his, his vaccines, right? His MMR and whatever, whatever the whole list of vaccines are, right? So we are told constantly what health decisions we have to make for our children to walk into school buildings, right? So, by the state, right? So, um, you know, I, I don't necessarily think that that's the sole argument, nor do I think that that's a sole argument against. Um, and I, I would not want to focus on that argument because, because of the precedent that's set in other areas.
Okay, oops. Anybody else have a comment here?
So if we just take out that language with the specific data, then can we vote on it tonight to say that we will advocate as a district?
John? Could we just do a tentative vote on the resolution as it is? And then see if we have to amend it to get more support?
Yeah. I wouldn't vote against this. If you look, if you're talking about, it's not going to be like seven to two or eight to one. I would vote for this. I just think it will have more weight and be better presented if you took out the absolute specific numbers. But again, that's only me. You know, I, if I hear consensus that that's a good idea, we'll do that. If I hear that's not a good idea? All right, all right. Who, who wants to take? Well, no, no, let me, let me ask it from the other direction, okay? Who would like to modify it to take out the specific numbers? Do we have five people who want to modify it? Yes, no? I'm sorry?
I have modifications, but I'll make it, not to say it was.
Oh, well, let's talk about it. You want to go through each line and, and who agrees on each line? Okay, come on. Because there's a lot of people came here to speak and
No, I think we should let them speak. I, I don't think we should do the line-by-line modification now. I think we should call the question, I think we should vote on it, and if, you know, if it, if it, if it fails, then we can look at the, you know what I mean? Revisions outside of the meeting, and if it passes, then, because I, I, and frankly, you know
I know, but if we do it that way, you're asking me to vote against something because I want to change it, when I really don't want to vote against it. You follow what I'm saying? That, and for me, that's, shh, time, time, guys. This is a meeting, I don't want to cut you off or anything, but we will give you plenty of ch- chance to talk, okay? So it's just a question of, I think everyone here wants to do a resolution. It's just a question of what it looks like.
I think also, for me, I just want to say, I, I, I don't think I'm in support of the resolution as it stands, but I, I do think we have a lot of community here who want to speak, and I, I think some of them at least want to speak about this issue, and it would be helpful for me to hear, hear that.
Can we table, can we table? All right, fine. Hey. Guys, all right, I'm going to go to comments from the public only on this resolution, okay? If you want to comment on something else, you're going to have to wait, because we're dealing with the resolution right now, okay? And we're doing this because we want to hear what people have to say. But please, I know it's a three-minute limit, please don't use all three minutes. Just try to move it along, okay? Now we don't need the time of, people are going to behave. Yeah, do your best, because there's few people behind you. Fine. And just introduce yourself too, because he's got to raise his, raise your hand.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. Welcome, new board members, and I want to thank you all for your service. And Mr. President, I appreciate your opening comments. Chris Johnson, 14 Nansbury Place, lived in Eastchester for 17 years. I have two daughters graduating from Eastchester High School. Three points to discuss. First point, June 8th board meeting, yes, it was disruptive. Fast forward to June 22nd board meeting, instead of asking the parents why they were upset, the board only looked at the decorum of the meeting to clarify why parents are upset, because their voice was not heard or considered. My wife and I sent an email on, before June 8th board meeting, regarding the superintendent's contract, and so I've not received a response, and our concerns were not addressed. A board member in the last board member meeting on June 22nd said she wanted an opportunity for open debate on issues, which I totally agree with. My question is, how and when does that occur? As of 11:40 last Sunday, the agenda for this meeting had still not been published. The parents can only speak after the board rules on an agenda and cannot ask questions to the board, then when does the open forum and debate occur? We don't even see, uh, we don't even know what's on the agenda until right before the meeting, which allows no time for a dialogue. The board members are voted into office to represent the parents and the community members. How do they know what the community wants if there is minimal discourse? The board should not rubber stamp issues without the opportunity for feedback from those you represent before you vote. My recommendations, post the agenda for the next meeting at the current meeting. Allow public comment on agenda items that are big-ticket items before you vote on them. Number two, it's my constitutional right to speak to you whenever tone I see fit to get my point across. United States Supreme Court, 1964, New York Times versus Sullivan. This nation is founded on the profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues shall be unhindered and robust and wide open. This is constitutional case law in this country. We are not here to make anyone feel uncomfortable, but let's be frank, there are a lot of attacks on our educational system, and if I have to get loud to protect my daughter's education, then so be it. Point number three, regarding the mask game plan for next year. In the United States, according to the CDC website, between January 4th, 2020, and July 7th, 2021, there have been 271 COVID deaths for 18 years old and under.
Say that again, that broke up.
Between January 4th, 2020, and July 7th, 2021, there have been 271 COVID deaths for years 18 years old and under. That's a 99.99 survival rate, and that's the number that we should be focused on, not the infection rate. To put that into perspective, there were over 2,500 fatalities under, with 18 and under, in automobiles in 2020. And we're not banning cars. So my recommendation, let the parents decide what's best for their kids, mask, no mask. It's an individual, family decision. As far as the argument that there may be people at home that have compromised immune systems, well, then let that family choose what's best for them. I do not want my child wearing a mask all day. If the board requires us to put masks on our children, then I'm going to ask the board to provide a clinical study that's peer-reviewed that shows that masks stop viruses. And that study has to include every type of mask the school is going to permit. Homemade masks, blue masks, white masks, that has to all be in that clinical study. So I say, let's get back to common sense. Let's free these children. The physical and emotional damage from masks are irreversible. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name, hello, is it working? Okay. Hi, my name is Beth Hoffman. I live at 9 Greenbelle Place. Hi, I like that.
Yeah, perfect.
I live at 9 Greenbelle Place. I have an eighth grader that just graduated from middle school, and I have a incoming sixth grader into the middle school. Um, there's a lot of discussion about masks. I think that this town, this board, this world is really, really, really hyper-focused on this issue of masks. And I think that that focus is incredibly misplaced. I think that there's a lot of talk about return to normalcy, and a lot of people just want to get back to March 12th, 2020, when the world looked very different, before the schools shut down, before businesses shut down. And unfortunately, the world is never going to get back to March 12th, 2020. And there's a lot of people throughout the course of this year who have suffered a lot and lost a lot. And this idea that we're going to remove the masks from our kids, and suddenly, everything's going to be back to normal, is really, really offensive to people like myself, who have lost a lot this year. What I don't hear anyone talking about is what are we going to do for these kids when they come back to school? You want to take their masks off? My daughter's at sleepwalk camp right now. It's completely mask-free, not a mask to be seen. And I assure you, removing the masks from these children is not a panacea. They're having record numbers of homesickness, counselors are quitting because they're just having a hard time adjusting. These children need a lot more than having a mask taken off their face. Where are the pro, where are the recommendations for mental health services? Where are the programs being suggested for these kids on how to integrate them back into school full-time? A lot of these kids have been left in their rooms for a year. A lot of these kids have had their parents home with them, making them every single meal. Suddenly, September 7th, they're going to come to school, and it's going to be a completely different world for them. Where are these recommendations? It's great, you want to take the mask off? Fine, I'm vaccinated, my older son's vaccinated, my younger daughter's not. She's going to wear a mask until she gets vaccinated, and then I'll take her mask off. If you want to change the policy for the school, I don't think it's a good idea, but it is what it is. I'm more concerned about these kids and their mental health, and what we're going to do for them once we take the masks off and they come back to school, and they have no clue how to interact with each other. There has not been one proposal from this board, whether it be the existing board or the new board members, about programs to help these kids. The only ones that did anything this spring for these kids were the PTAs, the parents themselves, who got together, planned parties, created events. Stop talking about masks. Nobody cares. There is so much more than taking a piece of fabric off your child's face to bring things back to normal. That's what this board should be concerned with. You want to pass the mask mandate? Go right ahead. But we need to worry about these kids and their mental health, and the children who have lost a lot this year, and bringing the world back to the new normal, not what it was before the pandemic.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Fallon. I am a Waverly parent. Vito, on the board, I, I do have a unique request. We worked on this statement together as community members, and we would like to present together. We timed ourselves, we're about three minutes each. May we present together? We want, we would like to present our statement together.
What does that mean?
Combining our time.
No, I'm not going to, I can't let you speak for three minutes, I'm sorry.
We're, we're speaking for about eight minutes total, three people.
If it's due with three people, you
What if someone donates their minutes?
It doesn't work that way.
Can I start a GoFundMe?
Just start.
Um, and I
Try to keep a reasonable amount of
Of course, everything in here is, everything in here is fact-based, and, um, I actually, I printed copies for all of you to have, because I think it would help in your discussion. Perfect. So we're actually going to begin with Kathy.
Hi, my name is Kathy Belli. 18 months, I look back and think about what my family has endured to ensure the safety of one another, our community, and our loved ones. As a parent of a fully remote student last year, I can't help but think about how far we have come today. Like many parents, I was concerned about the unknowns. However, I was most concerned about the restrictive environment of schools and mask-wearing for my kindergartner. At this stage, we have to acknowledge our progress, and we must consider facts over fear. It is time to take the next step in advocating for our children to return to normalcy by making masks optional. Dr. Vin Gupta, a Harvard-trained lung specialist, said masks requirements should be dependent on what's happening in the surrounding community with COVID vaccination rates and transmission. The country's entire risk profile has changed, and we truly need to look at our current local data. As shared tonight, Eastchester's vaccination rate is now 68.6%. The current infection rate for Westchester County, an average of 14 days, is 0.5%. As we know, there are only nine active cases in Eastchester as of July 11th. Some people have expressed that the concern is not COVID-19 in children, but it is long COVID, or the lasting effects of this virus. In a New York Times article published this week, Kids, COVID, and Delta, the author explained, death is not the only outcome that parents fear, of course. Yet long COVID and hospitalization have also been very rare in children. It's just that society has been so focused on COVID that we have paid intense attention to the risks associated with it, even when they are smaller than other risks that we unthinkingly accept. To take one example, we don't use the phrase "long flu", but it's a real problem, including for children. One academic study has found that up to 10% of people who contract influenza later develop cardiac inflammation. Viruses such as the flu and COVID will always continue to mutate, and variants will exist. Most recently, the Delta variant of COVID-19 does seem to be modestly worse, and it's beginning to spread in the U.S. At first, this may seem extremely concerning. Yet, if we consider England, where Delta is already widespread, the medical observations suggest otherwise. The National Health Service in England has only reported a slight increase in hospitalizations of children in comparison to earlier versions of the virus. In addition, a Johns Hopkins epidemiologist, Jennifer Newsos, stated, "I haven't seen data to make me particularly worried about" I haven't seen data to make me particularly worried about Delta in kids. This evidence suggests that serious versions of COVID will continue to be extremely rare in children. There is no cure for COVID and there will never be. Similarly to the flu, it is a virus that can and will continuously mutate. Will we ever unmask our children or will we continue to live in fear? A recent article from MSNBC solidifies the most important point with optional mask wearing for children. It states, guidelines that mandate the involuntary masking of children is based on an assessment of risk that is not justified by any rational calculation. We are no longer at the height of the pandemic. We are at its end. There is no guaranteed timeline for a safe and effective vaccine for young children. Waiting for a vaccine is making a decision based on the unknown. However, what we do know are the scientific facts that medically support parents having the choice to unmask their children. The silent epidemic. By providing choice, we are allowing families to make decisions regarding what is best for their children. As we have heard from many families and medical professionals, there is another major epidemic happening right before us. And that is the mental health crisis of our children. Undoubtedly, the pandemic has had a profound impact on mental health and continues to affect even our youngest children. The New York Times published an article on July 2nd titled, Eight-Year-Olds in Despair as a Mental Health Crisis in the U.S. Is Getting Younger. In the article, the author quotes that the CDC published a study in November 2020 comparing how often children come to the U.S. emergency room for mental health. Authorities found that between April and October of 2020, the proportion of mental health emergency visits for children ages five to 11, that's kindergarten to middle school, increased by 24% compared to the same period in 2019. Nine months after this study, here we are. And this concern has evolved into a health risk that far exceeds the risks of COVID in children. These are facts. A recent New York Times article published mortality rates by the CDC, which shows that the risk of COVID for five to 14-year-olds is 0.2%, while the risk for suicide of that same age group is 1.5%. Please consider these facts. We are no longer in a state of emergency for COVID. But we are certainly in a state of emergency for our children's mental health. Colorado's Children's Hospital recently declared an actual state of emergency for youth mental health. In their publication dated May 25th, Dr. Brumbach expressed that in his 20 years of practice in pediatrics, he has never seen anything like the current demand for mental health services. He states, our kids have run out of resilience. Their tank is empty. The publication explains how the crisis has grown worse in 2021, even after many schools reopened in-person instruction and even as the COVID-19 threat declines. Forced mask wearing in schools continues to worsen the mental health issues we are seeing in children. Is this now the greatest with risk we are taking with our children? Let's be clear, opening schools has not cured this silent epidemic. Our children continue to suffer in restricted environments, trapped behind masks. They remain voiceless and helpless. Providing a choice to unmask and make basic human connections like sharing a smile are essential. These simple yet meaningful interactions make children feel seen, feel loved and feel supported. We have survived this challenging time and our children have made tremendous sacrifices for the adults. It is time for all of us to support and advocate for our children. Their mental health matters and allowing families to unmask their children if they choose to do so is one of the final steps.
Hello, good evening. My name is Rachel Comrade. There has been much discussion about risk with COVID. However, we continue to take significant risks with mandating masks for our children. There are physical, developmental and community consequences to mandated mask wearing for our children at this point in time. Recently, as Jackie, a medical professional saved so well, there have been two studies published regarding harmful bacterias, pathogens and carbon dioxide levels in children due to prolonged mask wearing. Additionally, a local pediatrician, Dr. Calagaris, who is very well respected in this community, has also cited that she is in support of the resolution. The studies, one being in the University of Florida, tested that masks worn for five to eight hours were detected with 11 dangerous pathogens. Half of the masks were contaminated with one or more strains of pneumonia-causing bacteria, meningitis-causing bacteria and antibiotic-resistant bacterial pathogens. The second study, Bajama Pediatrics, which is the highest ranking pediatric journal in the world, also released a study showing an immediate concern for the alarming level of carbon dioxide detected in just minutes of wearing masks, three minutes. The study confirmed that not only is masking children unnecessary, but it's counterproductive. The study confirmed that not only is masking children, I'm sorry, in this study, within just three minutes, they found that kids were inhaling carbon dioxide up to six times more acceptable than the limit for adults. The younger the children, the higher concentration of carbon dioxide. And of course, the younger the children, the less likely they are to have severe complications or die from COVID. We know that mask wearing is extremely harmful to our very young children, both physically and developmentally. From the moment a baby is born, facial recognition is vital to their development. They have thousands of brain cells forming just by eye contact alone. When our young children are wearing masks at school, they are relying on facial expressions to learn. When they have these masks on, they can't see those facial expressions. They can't make those connections. They're losing the ability to form speech properly. They're losing the ability to learn social, emotional health, empathy, all of these important things that are irreversible. In addition, people are uprooting their lives in the sense of moving, homeschooling, due to this lack of choice. I have seen polls, I've seen Facebook groups designated to this topic. People are just talking about how if masks are mandated come the fall again, they will not put their children in school, they will homeschool. People are uprooting their lives for this issue. So it is a big issue and people do care. This is how desperate people are to do what is best for their children and families. For every person who moves, every person is forced to quit a job. It impacts the entire community and all of the businesses as well. What we advocate for is influential and important. Dr. Glass, the board and the community, we thank you for your time and appreciating this consider and in considering this information as you continue to advocate for our children. I urge you, please don't give up on them, but rather to fight for them based on these facts. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Miko. I am a parent of two young children in the Eastchester School District. One starting kindergarten in Waverly and the other one will be starting Greenbough and going into second grade. I come to you tonight with some deep concerns for what the fall 2021 school year is going to look like, particularly with regards to the mask mandates in COVID-19. Like for many parents, this past year and a half has been filled with questions, concerns, some confusion and lack of communication. There has been met, mixed messaging and I have emailed both Principal Doyle and Superintendent Glass on multiple occasions to get clarity. And unfortunately, I've rarely been satisfied with my received responses. So maybe I will ask again. Dr. Glass, my question I've asked you repeatedly was regarding mask mandates, particularly for our young children who are not impacted by this virus with a small percentage of the cases and a 99.9% survival rate. This is a stat that was always consistent and fortunately has never changed. So why is it that you can't take it upon yourself as a true leader to take into consideration that we are light years from where we were in 2020 and masks on our children are nothing more than a false sense of security? And even the CDC published it on their website stating that paper or surgical masks and cloth masks do not provide a level of protection for inhaling small airborne particles and it is not considered respiratory protection. I don't see why it cannot be at the very least optional for parents to decide whether their children should continue to wear masks this fall. I promise you, there will be parents who will welcome this choice with open arms. I think it is fair to give us the right to choose. I hope you consider listening to parents because ultimately we all have our children, all want our children to be in a safe, healthy environment. And choosing to either wear or not wear a mask is up to our parents' judgment. If you need some tangible proof, I was thinking of starting a petition to see if parents would prefer masks, masks in schools as optional. If I'm wrong about this, I will gladly follow the guidance you suggest. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carmelina Isolo and I actually am a medical professional. I am a family nurse practitioner and just listening to everyone, those great facts that were stated here tonight. I'm just going to add, I'm just going to add that, you know, cases don't hold any weight medically. The mortality rate and hospitalization rate is what holds the rate, is what holds the weight. So we know, yes, statistics change, numbers change, but the one constant worldwide, nationally, locally, from when COVID was at its most virulent early last year is that the hospitalization and mortality rate in children has been zero, 0% in its most virulent time. That has not changed. So all these other, all these other numbers do change, yes, but not that number. We really have to look at that number and say, okay, why are we forcing our kids to wear masks when the risk is so low? And the risks of wearing masks outweigh the benefits that we heard all night long. So I just wanted to make that one point and how Eastchester, Westchester County has pretty much achieved herd immunity just purely from a vaccination point of view, not including natural immunity. So we're well over 70, pretty much 70% just based on vaccination alone, not on, that's not including, I think it's about 15% of what is natural immunity in addition to. So like, we really have to look at that as well. And as far as the Delta variant, we cannot wait to get to Zeta, to take these masks off our kids. You know, it's Delta today, it'll be another variant today. This is what viruses do. They mutate, they create different strains, different variants. Thankfully, it hasn't been as virulent as the earlier strains last year, early 2020. But, you know, so I just feel like we cannot wait for there to be no risk. The flu has killed, fact, the flu has killed more children than COVID has. And we have never masked our kids for flu season. That's a fact. So I don't know why these kids are still wearing masks. The risks again outweigh, the risks of wearing masks far outweigh the benefit. And I think that's what I really wanted to say. Oh, yeah, no, that's okay. There was one other thing, a good one. My son is seven years old and I remember him saying to me, mommy, when can these masks come off? I cannot see my friends' faces. I can't see if they're happy. I can't see if they're sad. I don't know how my friends feel, mommy. That's coming from a seven-year-old. So yes, mental health, the mental health component is crucial, but it all starts with the removal of the mask. Because how are you going to see, how are your children going to know how they're going to feel? But it all starts, I'd be really concerned about the mental health of our children, along with the physical, how it really starts with the removal of the masks.
Good evening. My name is Denise Piper. What I'm going to briefly talk about is not about the mask and I'm sorry, I'm not going to sit here over three hours. A couple of months ago, we got an email from Dr. Glass about the Diversity Equity Inclusion Task Force. And I feel like the allure, I'm sorry, I'm going home. I'm going to speak for two seconds. So that I.
You want to comment after on that?
Well, fine. Really briefly, there's six parents and over 27 people that are not parents on the Diversity Equity Inclusion Task Force. And there's no transparency and no, we don't know what, what configuration that, what's going on in that task force. We don't know if you're teaching critical, they're going to teach critical race there, so that's my concern. So I'm going to go home and I'll come back and wait another three hours next month.
Hi. At this meeting, I'm upset to hear how much time is being taken up talking about something that's completely out of our control. Mask mandates are out of our control for good reasons because we are not entitled to make them. Our valuable time at this meeting has been talking about things out of our control, just so we can have the fantasy that we have some control over them. This thought that parents making a choice makes no sense. If my kid wears a mask, it protects your kid. My kid and most kids are not wearing N95 masks and N95 masks is the only masks that protect particles from coming in. As a parent of the Eastchester community, I wish that there are more conversations at the Board of Ed meetings about things that were within our control. Parents, teachers and children are in a mental health crisis because of the pandemic and not because of wearing masks. We have experienced both ambiguous and actual losses this year and our conversations need to shift to things that are in our control. I would love to go to Aruba and have Aruba weather in New York all the time. I don't have that. I'd love it to snow and be beautiful and get up to Vermont and ski in 30 minutes. I don't have that. There is things that are not in our control. Mask mandates are not in our control. We are, we can advocate for things, but do know that there are parent voices that are upset to hear that our time is being spent talking about things that we can't change. This year on PTA Council, I created a social emotional learning committee to push out the support that was needed. We had discussions on ambiguous loss, anxiety, sensory processing to help with virtual learning. These were all valuable things that were in our control to help deal with situations that we couldn't control. I'm asking that we can shift the conversations to social emotional learning and health. Can we discuss helping bridge educational gaps because of COVID? Can we discuss helping our teachers through this? Can we stop taking a time about this very distracting issue that is dividing our community and have conversations that can actually make change and leave the, the decisions to the science and the experts? I work with babies. I wear a mask because they are not vaccinated. I smile at them and they smile back at me because they have families that don't wear masks in their home. They see my eyes smiling. They have the ability to smile back at me. These children are resilient and they will work through this. They will learn with masks on, as I can tell with a four-month-old baby who can smile back at me with my mouth being covered. So I have, I'm thankful that you could give me the opportunity to share my opinion.
Thank you. Dante Avenue, I have a daughter in high school. I originally came here this evening as a representative of the Takahoe Board to announce the vaccines, which Dr. Glass has done for us. So I hope what I hear from everybody here is we're all behind the vaccines and we'll all do everything we can to get everyone who's eligible vaccinated. I'm also a working scientist, a scientist who is actually engaged in clinical studies for COVID right now. Spent the last year working a lot of hours on them. So I think it would be remiss if I didn't stand up and say the studies that are being quoted here from Germany, the one on the respiratory measurements of the masks and the one in the Florida schools are in a hot debate in the scientific community. So I think why this seems so difficult is because you're seeing science evolve. So we, this is something we've never seen before and so we can't rely on a study. We can't rely on a fact. We have to keep looking at the mass of data. We have to keep looking at the mass of data and react to that. And for a school board that doesn't sound too sure of who their medical director is going to be, I really would implore you to get some good, solid medical advice that you can work with to make good, solid decisions. There are public health servants here and public health scientists who are trying to protect not your decision, not your child, but the entire public. So please take that into consideration.
Hi, everyone. My name is Julie Fortier, 29th Sylvan. First, I wanted to welcome the new board members and thank you all for your service. I, I don't envy your position right now, and also Dr. Glass. These are really divisive questions, and I trust that you'll make the right decisions for, for all the children. I'm actually here to read a statement from a parent who could not be here tonight. I have a few thoughts as well, but I'd like to read her statement first. This is a parent, well, I'm, I'm going to use I, but just pretend it's this person. "I'm a general pediatrician who has practiced for fourteen years in New York City, and I have a rising fifth grader at Greenville. I've been monitoring children's physical, mental, psychological, and social health since the beginning of this pandemic. What I've noted is that children crave to be back in school, and they do not mind wearing a mask covering indoors if it means that they'll be able to be safely with their friends. My own daughter is eager to return to the classroom after a year of remote learning, and she knows that for the safety of everyone, she needs to wear a mask indoors until everyone has been vaccinated. Children and adolescents know that COVID is serious, and they want to be part of the solution. They do not want the worry of bringing home COVID and infecting their parents or grandparents. Wearing a face covering is a simple way for them to contribute to the safety of their families and community." There has been poorly designed study, a poorly designed study regarding the dangers of face masks for children that was recently published in JAMA, which I believe was referred to a few times tonight. It led to a lot of confusion and misunderstanding about inhaled carbon, carbon dioxide levels while wearing a mask. It has also been used as propaganda in multiple communities throughout the country in an effort to get masks off of our children. I want to address the study to clarify why its conclusions are flawed. The study was conducted by individuals with known biases toward masking and other non-pharmaceutical interventions against COVID. The lead author is a psychologist with no training pertaining to this area of research. The study used G100 CO2 incubator analyzer, I'm not the doctor, which is used to measure CO2 levels in incubators, not in people. There's no data supporting a G100 as a valid and accurate instrument for the type of measurement used in this study. The study did not address how they could distinguish between inhaled versus exhaled air, using the G100 apparatus. The authors also did not take measurements of blood CO2, blood oxygen levels, heart rates, or breathing frequency, which would have been actual indicators of potential harm in children. This study, which is being used as evidence of the dangers of masking, is misleading and invalid. An established and growing body of evidence, evidence has shown that masks are safe and effective way to slow, to spread up COVID in children and adults. With the increased transmissibility of the Delta variant circulating now, it's imperative that we continue to utilize non-pharmaceutical mitigation measures such as mask covering, such as face covering and masks to keep our community safe. It is the simplest way to allow our children to return to in-person learning without compromising their safety. Therefore, I strongly urge the board to continue mandatory masking within schools till our schools and community have reached an immunization threshold that can potentially confer herd immunity." So this is her statement. I wanted to say a personal note, I'm also a parent in the district. I have three teenagers, I have one who's actually out of school, out of the school. I feel very lucky that my kids are older because I don't have to worry too much about these issues, they're vaccinated. We can, you know, our, our life has almost returned to normal. So I really don't envy the parents who have like kids, you know, under twelve. I think it's, you know, it's a really tough decision to be in. But I feel like we have to put our trust that good decisions will be made, and to me, I feel like those decisions need to come from a responsible authority, not just, you know, just a smaller, you know, like a smaller district making this decision. What happens if, you know, we decide to do it, you know, Pelham doesn't, like, you know, it leads to, I think, a lot more division again in, related to, to the virus, and, you know, I just don't think we want to find ourselves in that situation again. So personally, I support, you know, the, the, I, I will say that I support whatever the mandate is going to be from the state, and I think that's the safest way to approach this, to basically let them make the decision. I wholeheartedly agree with advocating, right, the idea of writing a letter and saying, you know, you know, we need, I think, I think Cheryl might have said that, or Steve, like, we want the metrics, right? What is the threshold? What is the date when we're going to have a decision? And, and, and again, like, what is the threshold for this decision where we can say that masks are now optional? But really, the decision, I think tonight what I'm hearing is, you know, it's my personal decision. I think it, we have to weigh it against public safety. That's, that's what it is, right? And some of us might think that public, that, that personal decision comes before that, but I don't think we're out of the woods yet, and we still have to think about all of us. I want to make one last comment, which is to really think about what happens if, let's say, half, fifty-one percent of the people want masks to be optional. What do we do with the other forty-nine percent? And how many of these families will request that we have remote learning again in the fall? And I think that's a really important decision. Do we want to go there, right? Do we want our teachers to continue to teach in two different environments, right? But I think that's an important decision to take, and it's not just about like, what's good for me, right? It's going to have an impact on all of us. So thank you.
Hi. Jeff Rockman, Eastchester resident Bronx Street. I, I came tonight, I can address masks, but I, because it's part and parcel of what I came to talk about, I watched a couple of meetings, and I have to tell you that I was in education the better part of fifty years, a retired teacher, and I taught in New York City, I taught in Westchester, I taught upstate. And what's happening at these meetings is very, is not, it's not about education. Dr. Glass knows this, this isn't about education. There's something crazy political going on here, it's not education. And, and I came to say that, and then the first speaker tonight stood up and said, I just want to let you know that the Supreme Court says I can be as loud and as uncivil as I want to be. So I know I came to the right place, and I can be as loud and as, and as uncivil as anyone on the planet, but what is that going to do for kids? If you were a teacher as long as I was, you would know that there isn't one thing that happened here in the last meeting or the meeting before that's good for kids. You're going to start talking about kids. It's not about masks. Thank you so much.
Just one more thing about-
How many more people do we have? I'm just trying to-
I think I'm the last one.
Okay, because I'm going to ask, I'm going to take editorial license here, and the lady that I asked to sit down before, I'm going to ask her to come up right after you, we're going to jump ahead. She left? That's too bad, sorry.
Can I say everything that I wanted to say tonight, though, besides math?
I was actually going to go open it up for general comments, so you'll be the first one, and then we're going to deal with this after, okay? It's getting late, I want to get people to get, hear what they have to say, but please, 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 keep it short. Everyone's been respectful, that's great. Nobody's going to be uncivil this year, Jeff, that will not be tolerated, okay? So, yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to make one quick comment because there seems to be a trend that I'm noticing in a lot of the comments. I just want to be clear to everyone at home here, this Board of Education does not have the legal authority to take away the mandates of masks. All we're discussing is advocating to those who have the authority. So I just want to be clear, we cannot legally take away that mandate.
Right.
I just want everyone to be aware of that.
Thanks, Steve. It's just a reminder, we're advocating for getting guidance quickly and timely so that we can go where everyone wants to go, which is ultimately to have safe students not wearing masks, okay? So, go ahead, I'm sorry. Like I said, just, please try to move it along because I know they're off, and I'm not trying to cut you off.
Suzanne Johnson, fourteen, in his free place. Just one little thing about the mask, to remind everyone, New York State lost over fifteen thousand seniors based on Governor Cuomo's mandates of putting sick patients back into the nursing homes. So let's just put it in perspective where, where we're placing our trust. Besides that, I want to thank the new, the new members of the board for being here. I think you guys had a great start tonight, and it was good discussion. I'm here to discuss goal number four of Dr. Glass's goals that implements the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Program. It is my understanding that this intention of this program is to allow children to gain skills to navigate a global interconnected world through valuing a common humanity. On the surface, this sounds harmless. However, how could the end result be good when this is just another way to divide us from each other? My problem with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Program is that it's racially charged and anti-American. This, I believe, is a program as an instrument for the critical race theory. For those who still don't know what the critical race theory is, it's a theory rooted in the ideology of Marxism. Instead of valuing American liberty, it denies individuals from achieving their full potential by trying to equalize the playing field. The ideas of this program divide people by race, gender, and class identity, which are meant to inhibit growth. I classify the critical race theory as un-American. DEI circumvents parent authority and will permeate every aspect of our schools. It is anti-authority, anti-tradition, and anti-church. To the parents out there who are paying attention, these are ideas they will be drilling into your children day after day. This is a divisive and deceptive program that pretends to advocate for the well-being of our children, but it actually does the opposite. It teaches our children that they are nothing more than the color of their skin or their gender. This is morally wrong and disgusting. To those who don't believe me, read everything your kids do. Ask them to bring home their textbooks this year and read their assignments. You will then know the truth about what is being taught in the school. I implore this school board to reject the DEI program and to continue to choose excellence over diversity in our district. Thank you.
Okay, now we hit on something I really know.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Lawler, and I have four children in the district. I am here tonight to shed light on the Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity Task Force. I signed up but was not chosen. Instead, fourteen school staff, which include six teachers that either do not have children in the district, live in the community, or both. Two Board of Ed members, one of whom I believe no longer has children in our schools, one random community member, one member with no information after her name at all, and one individual who has since resigned from our district. All of these individuals were chosen over a parent with four children in the district, four children who will be directly affected and influenced in the future if plans are made to incorporate any of this nonsense into our schools. You are discussing whether or not in the future you will indoctrinate our children. I think parents have more skin in the game than anyone else, but yet we are not represented on this task force in the numbers we should be. Out of twenty-seven, we've got nine parents. This task force is clearly stacked to lean in the direction you want it to be. And I believe, and I believe it's a conflict of interest. The Department of Education will be pushing for this. Make no mistake, this is CRT in motion. The New York Department of Ed website, it's right there in black and white, they call it culturally responsive framework, and I quote, "How educators understand culture has real consequences for our children, as a limited understanding of culture has the power to disadvantage some while privileging others." Well, disadvantage, code for victims, and privileging others, who's the privileged? Well, another quote, "While schooling has traditionally privileged the capital of families from dominant backgrounds," that's code for white, you got white privilege. My advi, my advice to the parents in Eastchester, vote no on the next school budget. There are books sitting in the Greenville Library right now with anti-police sentiment, and where the letter B in black is capitalized throughout the entire book, and the letter W in white is in lowercase throughout the entire book. All subtle messages to our children that white is bad and you are privileged, so your voice is not as valuable as others. This is what they are spending their money on. So vote no on the next school budget and send a message. Finally, I would like to request a reorganization of this task force to show equal representation. Twenty parents, ten supporting CRT, ten opposing, eight school staff, half supporting CRT, half opposing. That's a fair and balanced task force, not the one you currently have. I urge your school district to stick with what you do best and stay out of politics because, believe me, this is all politically motivated. I laugh with the lady that came up before and said, we need to, like Governor Cuomo, we're going to trust him, he killed half the grandmas in New York City. I mean, it was this lunacy, lunacy. I urge teacher, children, math, ELA, social studies, and science, leave a light lessons to the parents. Thank you for your time tonight, good night.
So I'm thankful to say that what I'd like to talk about is a slightly less controversial topic, so I hope we can have a slightly nicer conversation on that. So I'd like to bring it back to Agenda Item 9.1 with, oh, sorry. I'm Adrian Lee, I'm a student at Eastchester High School, I'm going into senior year. So I'd like to speak regarding the security officer that was deemed responsible. The security officer that was deemed responsible after the security breach that happened in June, Mr. Vito Duranzo. So I'd like, I, I'm okay with putting his name out there because at this point, it's already public community knowledge. There's been a petition circulating written by myself that is asking for a reconsideration of Dr. Glass's decision to fire Vito from his job, and it has amassed about sixteen hundred signatures from both students and parents and other residents throughout the Eastchester community, both people that know him personally and maybe people that don't know him quite as well. But I think that number of signatures is just a testament to show how well Vito was liked and the trust that parents and students still have in him despite his failure, his admitted failure at the security breach. Now, I'm not, I don't want to discredit Dr. Glass's decision, understand the logic behind that choice. It was, it is undeniable that he did make a mistake admitting someone that posed a serious threat to the school. However, many parents and students, myself included, feel as though that one mistake shouldn't be enough to fire someone who's served this school and this community for decades, both as a retired police officer and a security officer for fifteen years. I think a vast sentiment is that the- I think a vast sentiment is that the punishment received was too harsh. So I'd like to appeal Dr. Glass's original decision to fire Vito DiRizzo. I'd like to appeal it to the Board of Education and I ask for a reconsideration and possibly a statement and/or decision. So thank you for your time.
I just want to say, thank you for taking the time to come here and talk to us tonight. I think it is always best when our students come and address the board and speak from their hearts and they show the kind of persons and character that we as a district are putting out into society. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tina Fernandez. I am the mother of Anthony, class of 2020. Nicholas, class of 2024, and Andrew, class of 2030. I'm also the co-president of the Eastchester High School PTA. And I'm speaking to you tonight also in reference to the dismissal of Vito DiRizzo, security guard at Eastchester High School. I think we can all agree that safety of our children and teachers and staff is the most important role. And that of our security staff, of course. I was so pleased to hear all the discussion tonight about what you're planning on doing to shore up our buildings and I think we're all really looking forward to seeing all of that implemented, whatever the cost, obviously, human life being the most important thing. But I would just like to begin by saying that the student who was granted entrance into the school building is a community member. Their family is friends of our family. This child was with my son from Weaverly through Anne Hutch to Eastchester High School. The family is still in our schools. And I just, you know, I think that I wanted to come tonight to say that I'm hoping that everyone will be considerate of this family and sensitive to the issues that they're dealing with. And thank you to Dr. Glass, who informed me today that he's involved in helping the family seek help for this family. The young man was granted entrance into the high school by Mr. DiRizzo. This caused a lockdown and I hope the board is aware, new members of the board especially, that we really don't believe that he had intentions of causing any harm to any of the the staff or the children that were in the building at the time. Unfortunately, this young man has been vilified in the telling and retelling of the events on social media and it's really, really unfair. And so having said that, I'm here today on behalf of the 1,600 parents who signed and students who signed the petition to ask the board to consider reinstating Mr. DiRizzo. I'd like to ask the board to consider retraining and reinstating him, you know, based on what you discussed tonight regarding setting up another system of doors. I think we all kind of identified that that was really the major issue with what happened. And of course, as Adrian mentioned, it was an error for sure. When children arrive in the middle school and high school, the day-to-day contact for parents with teachers and staff decreases and Vito is that friendly face that students and parents are greeted with. The incident revealed a weakness in the security of the building. As a parent, I'd like to ask for the reconfiguration of the entry to the high school, be reassessed at this time, and address that constant flow of foot traffic through the main door. This is the only door that students in both the high school and middle school can use to enter. Our request would be to shore up the security at the door by building a man trap, vestibule, door within a door lobby, whatever you want to call it, to determine the intent of all students and visitors to the building. The current system where Vito was meant to vet visitors through an intercom system is impractical and we feel that Vito is taking the fall for a faulty security system. We respectfully request that Vito DiRizzo be reinstated.
Hi, everyone. Tina Russo, 103 Lake Shore Drive. With regards to Vito, I'm going to echo everyone's comments here, these two people, because I would trust him with my kids in a heartbeat. He's a community member, he's always been here, he's retired law enforcement, and he knows everyone in the community. So, I don't know the exact details, I already got some. It was a former student who I think alleged maybe bringing lunch into a sibling. So, there was some trust there. With respect to the masks, for example, and the unmasking, at the end of it, and you know, you could even say with the, maybe potentially vaccines. It should be the parents' decision. So I hear people saying, "Oh, well, if my child is, you know, not going to wear a mask, or rather, is going to wear a mask, your child should too." I think people need to do them and make their decisions for their families and other people will do what they need to do for themselves. Because obviously, if you're wearing a mask, if you choose to wear a mask, that's your choice. And you're protected. So, to the people out there that weren't talking about that. I mean, after all, people could go to a baseball game or a sporting event maskless. Go to Costco, place is packed, maskless. And you're going to put kids in masks for five, six, seven hours. Seems a little abusive to me. I wanted to ask, what's the policy on marking sidewalks with chalk? Because I was walking one night and there was a bunch of artwork on the sidewalk. So I wanted to know if you could tell me.
Sidewalk on the school property?
Correct. Is there a policy or? No policy, okay. And tell them not just artwork. I'm sorry? I don't know, actually.
If you see something like that, call the district office. Because apparently, it's not something that was authorized, something that was allowed, it wasn't artwork.
Well, that's kind of my question, Vito, so...
Well, I don't know the answer, apparently...
Well, he just basically indicated that there was no policy, there's...
I would just say that, you know, if it's chalk that washes off and is part of art activity or something, there'd be a policy against it. If it's something permanent,
Oh, okay.
Then it might be different.
So any kids or anybody could come and play with chalk and do whatever they want? Is that accurate?
Because if it's after hours, you know, something going on, you might be a little concerned about that. But that would be really more of a safety, security supervision thing after hours. But during a school day, you should be teacher-driven activity, right?
Oh, so it's sponsored, okay, gotcha, all right, thank you. And let me see here, that's it. But I will agree, I initially got it here for Vito. I think he should be reinstated.
I just want to comment on the person who brought up Critical Race Theory. You can correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Glass, but there's no Critical Race Curriculum in Eastchester, correct? Now, let me also mention that of the 738 school districts in New York State, there is not a single curriculum in any of those 738 school districts called Critical Race Theory. I just want to make it factual, okay? Because what was brought up here tonight is something that's been brought up on TV and on talk shows. There is no curriculum called Critical Race Theory in New York State in any school district in the entire state. And that's a fact. Is it here, Dr. Glass? There is no curriculum here, correct? Thank you.
Hi. Lori DeLapara, 28 Clonkey.
Please.
My family has lived in Eastchester for almost 10 years. And my children are in the middle school, one going into high school, and they've been here since Weaverly. And I'm here tonight to support Eastchester's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force. You may think we don't need this, but try to keep an open mind. Let me tell you a couple of personal stories. When we moved here, my kids went to a preschool in Scarsdale and there were four other families from Eastchester. One morning at the drop-off, one of the Eastchester moms said to me, "How do you like living in Eastchester?" And I said, "I loved it." She commented, "Well, the people in Scarsdale tend to look down their nose at Eastchester." And I thought, "Why? That's such a strange thing." She said, when I asked her, "Why do they do that?", she said, "Too many Italians." And I thought, "Wow, didn't they know that Italians had been here since 1635 in New York?" But I'm Italian, so I didn't really give it much thought, except that I had leapt into a town that had people of my same heritage. But honestly, alarms should have gone off in my head because what that was, was a discriminatory statement. It's that us versus them mentality, that fear of something other that we need to address head-on and why we need the DEI Task Force in our district. I live in a bicultural household. My husband is Mexican and my children are Mexican-American. I was shocked and saddened a couple of years ago when I heard another child tell my son, "Hey, Mexican, go mow my yard." Or another child that said, "I can't wait until the president builds that wall. So they put you on the other side and I don't have to see your face anymore." Kids aren't born with these ideas, they're learned. They hear it from the adults in their world and they believe it to be true, that they are somehow better or should fear the other. They need to be taught to see the warning signs of discrimination, to celebrate diversity, to be inclusive, and to believe that all persons are equal. Our great country was built by immigrants. So unless you're a Native American Indian, your family came here from somewhere else. And back in the 1800s, when Europeans came here to America, the Italians were the other. We were called Guineas and Waps. And in those early days, Italians were lynched in the US because we were different. We spoke a different language, we ate different food. Many Irish were forced to work as indentured servants when they came to America. During World War II, we put thousands of Japanese Americans in internment camps. Let's not forget our past, let's learn from it and let's teach our kids not to make the same mistakes. Whether it's gender bias, racial prejudice, or discrimination based on sexual orientation, our children need to be taught to see the danger in this type of thinking. The DEI Task Force will not only create greater awareness and inclusion, but will help our students by encouraging acceptance and prepare them to thrive in an increasingly diverse world. Our children deserve this. They deserve a competitive advantage in a more global and interconnected economy. Please do not deny them this opportunity. I would like to thank Dr. Robert Glass at the Board of Education for bringing the DEI Task Force to our district, for paving a path to success for our children and fostering a kinder, more inclusive community for us all. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Harrison. I live on Park Drive in Eastchester. First, I want to say that the issue of masks come from, my children will wear masks. But I am absolutely willing to... What the state says, what the CDC says, whatever the Health Department says, that's good because my kids are still going to wear masks, but whatever they say is what I would go by. I just left my family, my brother came in tonight. My sister-in-law is a special disease expert. She works around the world. And her reaction as to what's happening now is that we wear a mask, we wear an N95 or K95 anywhere we go, including stores, because I understand what is happening already. So, I agree, unless the state or the Health Department or CDC mandates that we should do something differently, that it's up to parents. I have no problem with that. I only ask that if my kids choose to wear masks, which they already have said they want to, that there is no problem with that. So, my next comment is, you know, in terms of the conversation around Critical Race Theory. It's not surprising to me that already this has been brought up because of the level of conversation around this, the level of ignorance around this, and the fact that most people don't even understand what the conversation around Critical Race Theory is. They see it somehow as something against white people that is something against our history when it's nothing remotely like that. That's not the conversation. The conversation is around our history of the nation and how it has impacted different groups within this nation. That should be nothing that scares anybody because it should be based on fact and nothing less than fact. Ruby Bridges existed. Her book, the book about Ruby Bridges, is about her journey through a group of Americans, white Americans, that said they didn't want her to be part of their school system. That's fact. It's not hyper, that's nothing, there's no lies about that, that's just our history. You don't want to show that why? Why would you not want to tell that story? Why would you not want my daughter to understand that story in the context of American history? Please tell me that. Because that's a fact, that's not a lie. There are many facts about our history that are not things that we should celebrate. The Confederacy is not something we should celebrate. We don't celebrate traitors to our nation. So when people say they're objecting to Critical Race Theory, they have no idea what they're talking about because the concept of Critical Race Theory is specifically based in how race has impacted our justice system and our institutional systems, period. This is not about white people are bad. This is about let's hold our history in the light it should be held in and not try to cover it up. This is not about white people being bad. This is about our history, where all of us have an obligation to see what is and what was. To have somebody stand up in this room and suggest that this is a wrong thing for our children to learn, I want to ask why? Why do you object to our children learning our history, our facts? This is not conjecture, this is what was. Really, this is what was and what is. So, for those of you who want to like get on this bandwagon, which is crossing the country, let's be honest about this. This is crossing the country with the same people that believe in the big lie that say that this didn't happen, that we shouldn't also look at what we have done. The only way we change and become better is because we look at our history, no matter what it is. It's not just about race, it's about all of our history. We train, we change as a people because we are willing to look at who we have been. Period. It doesn't just matter about black Americans, it matters about all of our institutions and how we have behaved. America is great. America is something that we should hold up and accommodate because we understand how important it is to look... because we understand how important it is to look at who we are. If we are not willing to look at who we are as a people, then what is the point of our democracy? Who are we? So when somebody stands up here and talks about critical race theory without any understanding of what it is, I object. I object loudly. And it's not just because of who I am. It's because I'm an American, and I'm very, very proud of this nation. But the reason I'm proud of this nation is because we have endured and because we have looked at what we have done and we have made changes based on it.
Okay.
So I am...
Please.
Excuse me? I had not interrupted anybody, and I wouldn't. I am done.
I'm just requesting that you finish it.
Yes, I'm done.
Time out. Let's be respectful. I asked you to sum it up.
I thank you for the time. I appreciate this board. I welcome the new board members. I just... I am saying what I have to say, and I thank you for the platform to say it. That is what the United States of America is about. Thank you.
I think this is going to be our last speaker, I hope. Yes? Is there someone behind you? All right, then just please, Michelle, it's kind of getting late.
Yes. My name is Michelle Trioti. I live at 378 Marbledale Road. I am, I guess, an alum from the high school. Not myself, but I have a kid, a daughter, that graduated in 2014, another daughter in 2017, and a daughter in 2018. I'm here to speak to the board and ask Dr. Glass to reconsider his decision about Vito. I really felt horrified when I saw the Facebook post about the situation that happened. I don't comment politically on anything on Facebook, but I felt I needed to stop what was being said. And then, the next day, I found out the security guard was Vito and that he was let go from his position. Vito is the most sincerest, most genuine person I know. And he made a mistake, but a lot of people in the situation made a mistake. There's a lot to the situation that happened. There was a failure by the police department. There was a failure by the school. There was a failure with the security system. That goes back to 2017, 2018, when I was in the school. Yes, we tried to get a bond, it didn't happen. There's a lot of factors in this case. It wasn't Vito's fault, 100%. He made a mistake. He didn't follow procedures. I really would hope that the board and Dr. Glass could reconsider the decision. Give him a warning, a strike against him. It's over again. You know, like, there's got to be a consideration here, because there are a lot of factors that we don't all know. And if this boy was a threat, Vito would have never let him in the school. He knew him. He knew him. The buzzer at the door. What was the difference if Vito opened the door and said, "Why are you here?" If the boy wanted to push Vito to the side, he could have. The system doesn't work. The high school, all the schools, need a different security system. And I know you're going to address that, but I really would hope that you guys can consider reinstating Vito. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Crystal Jones Johnson. I live at Park Drive. I sit here tonight and listen to people say that diversity is not important and to choose education. Well, educating our children correctly would incorporate diversity, which helped build America. The sad part about it is that minorities, blacks, have been taught one side of American history, which speaks very little bit about our accomplishments or contributions to American history. Our education should be an inclusive inclusion of races and ethnicities in America. And I would like to say to the people, to the person that says in the books that the school is generated by or have brought, that the book says that whites are bad and blacks are good. Well, welcome to black children's world, where whites have been praised and blacks have been viewed negatively or put down.
Hey, good evening. My name is Pete Joyce. I live in Nelson Drive. I've been a Eastchester resident for about 15 years. I've had four kids in the school district or graduated from the district. I want to welcome the new board members. I want to thank the existing board members. And I want to thank everyone else. First, I want to talk to my friend, Robert. You said you needed a medical professional to decide whether or not we should have masks or not. I'm not going to ask you for your answer, but I'm sure your kids are going around town and into stores and out of stores and everything else like that. And you didn't need a medical doctor to tell you that they didn't need a mask to go over in town and do what they needed to do. So I just ask you to think about that. I know, but I'm just saying, it's like, you know, there's a lot of kids going around that aren't doing it, right? Like, my daughter's a junior, and she was allowed, because they didn't have parking, to allow to go out to lunch. So instead of having three kids in a car, she got 10 kids in a car. So what was the difference? They were in school all day, and 10 kids got in the car, and they went to the store, and they got lunch, and they came back and put their masks back on. So I don't think the mask thing is really working. So that's why I stand on the mask, as far as I don't think it's... And if you want to follow a quote, what did he say? You know, "Follow the science, follow the science, follow the science," right? So 99.9, I don't know how much further we have to get. After I'm done speaking, I hope that you guys just decide to vote on this and whether it passes or not. But I think it's too much time being spent on it. Now, I just want to speak on Vito. I sat here all night waiting. Dr. Glass, I heard you state... I was at the meeting last March when you spoke, and you said you had two meetings subsequently to discuss what happened with Vito. And I was taken back that one of your suggestions was you had to give a working phone number to the police department. Like, I can't believe that you had to come up with it after being here two years. And last year, you made a promise to me. And I was in the room, and you promised this would never happen again. But yeah, it happened again. So you made two mistakes, right? So two mistakes. But you didn't get fired. Vito made one little mistake. And to hire somebody that's the fabric of this school district, the fabric, he's given 40 years to this community, and to say that you make one little mistake? What are you teaching the kids? If you make one mistake, we're going to do X, Y, and Z to you? I mean, you walk into the school district, you look forward to seeing Vito. Vito knows every one of my kids' names. He knows who I am. That's who you want. You want to go out and you want to hire somebody else that knows nothing about the community, that knows nobody in the community? You think that's going to solve the problem? I find it hard to believe. You know, I really think that the whole Vito thing was blown out of proportion. It happened very quickly. There was somebody that he's familiar with within the community that came into the school. And whatever his needs or wants are, you know, Vito tried to discuss it, and things went out of hand. But I really think that, you know, we can't just pull the trigger on someone like Vito. That's very important to the community. So I want to thank you, Vito.
All right. Are you last, or does that lady back there want to speak also?
Last, I'm last.
All right. One more after you, and then we're going to have to get back to the agenda, because I've been very... I hate to use this word, liberal, on the allowance of time for speakers. I haven't cut anybody off. Going forward, we're really going to have to try to restrict it to three minutes, because we can't be here all night. But I'll let you say what you have to say, so...
Thank you.
Please continue.
Thank you. I'm going to speak about Vito. And what I'm going to mention is looking from my middle school. So she made remarks to me, like, "Mom, aren't we a community that..." She goes, "We have a lot of children in our community that I know." She goes, "We go by and we say autistic." And I'm not... I don't know this child, so I don't know what their function was or how deep it went. But she said... She made a comment to me that drove in deep. She said, "There are so many children in this community." And her understanding is that Vito knew... This kid was a recent graduate. And maybe this child's understanding, and I don't know, so forgive me, because I don't know all the facts. But maybe this child's comfort was, "I want to go to where I know, where I'm comfortable." And this is what she was telling me. Maybe this is like, if he grew up in this community and his family's in this community, and he was having a hard time, and he knew Vito, maybe he just needed to speak to Vito. And maybe it was wrong for Vito to let him in. But what I'm concerned about is, it was a Wednesday, and I know that we didn't have a regular school day. It was a remote day. But we had one security guard that was responsible for this entire campus. I know other things were going on. There was still one security guard. Where was the security? Because when I drop off my daughter in the morning, there's always other security guards. And if this child was in hot pursuit by the police now, then why didn't the police turn on their sirens? Why didn't they use their loudspeakers to say, to alert Vito? Because I think everybody in the building would have said, "Okay, wait a minute, what's going on? There's sirens right outside the door." Did that happen? I don't think so. So getting back to my daughter's message, maybe it was just that we are in a community that we... You know, I'm grateful that my child is, you know... Well, I mean, with COVID and everything, maybe we have some emotional challenges ahead of us, some, you know, psychological and emotional challenges ahead of us that I hope the school addresses. But that's all I really wanted to say, was that I really hope that Vito gets a second chance to prove himself. He's well-known to the community. My son, you know, I have three children that grew up in this community. They grew up from Waverly. This is my last one in the middle school. But they all know Vito. So that's all. Good night.
No, I'll be fast. I'll be... Dr. Glass knows I'm fast. Hi, I'm Julie Gerton. I wanted to welcome the new board members. I think it's exciting to see new people in these roles. I very much liked many of the old as well, but it is great to see you here. And thank you so much for the seven o'clock start time. I think we are all grateful for that. So I think we can, all of us here in the peanut gallery, be agreed that we love the seven-minute start time. I'm just being a little bold here. And seeing clapping for comments before me, I think it's pretty unanimous, supportive of Vito, which I'm coming here to support as well. We also have some controversial issues in front of us. One of those controversial issues that we've discussed is masks. And we've also heard, unfortunately, that it is not the board's premise... It's the board's responsibility to make mandates, only recommendations on masks. However, the board is empowered to do so very much for us. And I want to just reissue the plea that some speakers before me have issued. Please work on social-emotional help. Please. There's $500,000, I think, from the American Rescue Plan in our district. If that's correct. I think people are nodding me. That's right. Please spend that money and support our kids. Help them get up to speed. Help our kids get social-emotional learning. Do all of these wonderful things with that money that you can do. Let's not spend time, line by line, going through a proclamation, a recommendation to the government. Sorry, I'm tired. That's my first line. Last piece, the DEI committee. I think it's actually a really great idea to include more parents on committees like this. I saw all the teachers and wonderful members of the administration were included, and I saw two of my daughter's favorite teachers in the world there. I was really excited to see the teachers, really excited to see the administrators. But there's an opportunity to include more parents in these conversations. There's an opportunity, perhaps, to include students in these conversations. I would very much like to implore the board to take every opportunity to include more parent voices and more student voices so we can get a bigger, rounder picture. And thank you. Good night.
Okay, I have to do this. Judah, is there anybody who wants to comment through Zoom? All right.
All right. I'm going to make a motion to... Technically, I'm allowed to make a motion that we take just the three, and anyone else...
That's it. That's all. They asked first, they're in.
All right. So we're going to start with Deborah Periera. I apologize if I botched your name.
Just ask her to try to keep it...
You should be able to unmute.
Hi, Judah. I'm going to turn the deck radio on, so just unmute your...
If anybody's leaving, just please do so quietly, okay? Because we're trying to do this on Zoom.
Just working like this? Deborah, are you unmuting?
Go to the next person. You go back to them.
Okay. Terry Bernardi, you have the microphone. Terry, last time.
Hi. I don't have a question or a comment. I'm sorry. I don't know why I raised my hand.
That's the best news of the night. I don't think anybody in this room is complaining.
Terry, you've just got a big round of applause. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Elizabeth. We're going to allow you to talk.
Hi, yes. I'm on, because I wanted to speak my voice in regards to Vito. I worked there in the cafeteria. I have worked at the Waverly School. I was even there when the intruder came in 2019. The security guard that was there in 2019 at Waverly, yes, she was a substitute, but she was told on numerous times not to let people roam the hallway. She did that. Vito made one mistake by allowing a former student into the school. But nobody realizes Vito was a former police officer who is trained to deal with situations like this and knows how to talk a special needs person, if this was a special needs person, down. The child ran because they felt threatened by the police being there. Had the police not been in there, I think the child would have been fine just standing there talking to Vito. And I feel that Dr. Glass should give Vito a reinstatement immediately, because he does care about the key to the Eastchester school district. Thank you for your time.
And do we want to try Deborah Periera again? Deborah?
Hi. I don't have a comment, actually.
Oh, excellent, okay. Well, then, thank you for... No worries. Alice Jennings raised her hand since. Are we going to... I said we were the last three. We had a couple people.
Last one.
Last one, okay. Oh, yeah. So as I have more hands come up, it's going to be hard to keep them. So Alice, you're last, I'm sorry.
Hi, can you hear me?
We hear you.
Okay. So I just wanted to comment on the three major topics, you know, that were focused on the whole meeting, one being that the masks are removed. And obviously, we know that, you know, the Board of Ed and Dr. Glass cannot approve this if this is not mandated by the state. But will the board and will Dr. Glass support and encourage, advocate for our children to have these masks removed? It's imperative for these children to not go back to school. They have not worn masks since the day... I can't... I shouldn't say for all children. A lot of the children that I know and my own children, they have not worn masks since the day they left school. To put a mask back on them on September 9th will be detrimental to their mental well-being. My child will be in... All three of them will be devastated. So I want Dr. Glass and I want the Board of Ed to support and encourage the state and lock hands, like they did last year, on all the parameters that they set forward. And Dr. Glass specifically said they were locked... All superintendent... And not, Dr. Glass specifically said they were locked, all superintendents of the Westchester County were locking hands and locking arms and in support of no plexi, nothing more than three, you know, the six feet. So let's lock hands and go forward with no mask and, and urge the state to go forward with what's meant to be for the kids and make it optional. Make it optional for the people that feel safe and who don't. My second thing is that Vito, you know, I don't understand all the circumstances. I'm not a high school student, but obviously, there's a lot of things that should be looked at. And there's so many people advocating for Vito to be reinstated. And I hope the board would re, you know, look at the circumstances and the, and the wellbeing of the children. And, and honestly, if we really look at it, like, you know, he, there, there was a break in security, but there was a break in security many times in the district. And people were not fired. So why are we firing someone, but we didn't fire other people when there was breaks in security? Thank you.
Okay, let's, public comments are now closed. So now we're back to the board, this proposed resolution. And thank everybody who stepped up to the mic, who made their comments. They were all heard, they were all appreciated. Thank you for keeping it respectful. Thank the audience for, for their enthusiasm, okay? But now we're just going to move forward. And let's talk about this resolution right now. So first thing I'm gonna ask is, just a straw poll. How many people think we're gonna do a resolution tonight, or want to do a resolution tonight? Yes, no? Yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six, six? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, sorry. Okay, so two don't want to do a resolution tonight, so, all right. The majority clearly wants to do a resolution. So let's, let's talk about, because it is five to 11, let's try to do this quickly, okay? I have one whereas I want to take out, and I hope everybody agrees with me. One of the parents that spoke tonight made a very interesting point, which I know we all agree with. And that the number of cases really don't mean anything. So saying whereas Eastchester has nine cases, and remember I gave the example of, is nine the right number, is 90 the right number? Why don't we just take out that whole sentence? Because I don't think the number of cases really affects whether people should be wearing masks or not. It's really all about hospitalizations and how sick people are getting, stuff like that. So I'm gonna ask, is the majority of people okay with taking that statement out? Yeah, you know, you're okay, you're okay, you're okay, you're, okay. We'll take that line out, okay? The cases line is out. My only other problem is the line before it, which, which ties it to the Westchester County positive test rate. Again, that's talking about positive test rates. We don't know how accurate tests, you know, positive tests are. We know that there are false positives. We don't know if .5 is the right number, we don't know if 1.5 is the right number. So I'm gonna suggest that we say, and I'm assuming that that number is absolutely correct as of today, which is what it says, okay? That we just add some words that say that the rate in Westchester has been significantly reduced and is currently at 0.5%. That's a true statement, and it doesn't give someone the ability to argue and say, well, what if it goes up to one? Or goes up to one and a half? So is everybody okay with saying that? I got a yes, you got a yes. Are you okay with that?
How many more changes are we gonna make?
That's the only one, the one.
Yeah, but other people are gonna have the changes they wanna make.
I'm gonna ask that. We're only talking-
Let's just have a vote on the resolution.
Well, are you okay with that change? Yes or no?
If that was the only change.
Yes, okay. Yes, yes, all right, we got enough. Now we got, anyone else have any other changes they want to make to it, okay? I, I presume you don't want to vote for it.
I'm voting against it at all.
That's, and that's fine? Okay. What is the change? That's what I want to hear. I think we can do that in the letter that goes along with this. Because I also, hang on, we'll deal with him first, then we'll deal with you. I think that in whatever letter, we also need to say when we want a decision by, so that we could have a clear definition going into September. I don't know what that number is, I'm gonna lean on the administration for that. Is it August 8th, is it August 15th, is it August 21st? I don't know the date, but we need a date whereby we get that guidance.
But does that need to be in this?
No, it doesn't need to be in here.
So then, that'll be in the letter.
And I think Judith's change could be in the letter as well. Is that okay? Now, Jackie.
Okay, I think just the problem with that suggestion is that I feel that the state is constantly changing the goalposts with what is appropriate.
We agree, that's-
Right, but then I feel like then they keep changing it. Like from that weekend with the confusion on the Friday to the press conference on the Monday and making a lot of jokes about, oh, when do you think we'll reach 70%? Let's take bets on it, I just wouldn't-
I think we all want to open school without masks. I think that's what I'm hearing, is, am I hearing differently than anyone else? I, we're not asking for that. We're asking for the guidance, when it can be opened. Yeah, we're asking for guidance by a certain date on whether we will require masks or not.
Asking to remove the mandate, that's different than asking for guidance. I'm saying we should ask for clear and concise guidance on when we need masks and when we don't. Because I agree with Rob, but we don't have the expertise, we have the data to say-
I agree with that too.
Okay, so then how can we ask for a mandate to remove masks? We don't know what the rules are as to what masks are.
I think what you're asking for is for them to provide us the rules. And I think the purpose of this resolution is for them to provide us to say, you don't need masks anymore. We've looked at all the data, and we decided the state now, okay? The state decides, we've looked at the data. I don't want to ask what the data has to be, because that's, that's not our purview. We're asking them, or get off the pot, okay? I mean, this is a discussion, we're talking, right?
Well, I accept your interpretation, I just disagree. I think, I think we can all agree that regardless of what we ask for, they're gonna look at statistics, right? They're not gonna look at did Eastchester send us a letter, did Doc go- They're gonna look at the numbers.
Nobody trusts the state to make that decision.
You will.
And that's the foundation-
You want a resolution-
But we don't, we don't have a choice. The state will make a decision, and whatever they make is what we're gonna have to follow. And we're just saying that we would prefer that their decision be to remove the mandate.
Yeah.
They're going to base it on statistics and numbers and whatever.
Any other?
Yeah, I just want to say something, because I listened to, thank you for letting the community speak. That was really clarifying to me. I just want to, I don't support the resolution on this issue, and I want to explain why. I think a resolution is unnecessary. I think in many ways, it's a distraction because it's a cipher for bigger issues related to negotiating the pandemic, including student mental and social health and issues of individual control in a public health crisis where it's necessarily, you know, undermines our control. It also creates confusion. That came out in the comments that the district is in a position to make this call when we have to follow New York State guidelines. So I think it is both a distraction and it creates confusion, and potentially so is division. I think that if New York State guidelines come down, as I expect they will, that kicking it to the districts, it's pretty clear where the board is gonna stand on that. So I just don't think we need this resolution.
Okay. Anyone else have any other? I'm sorry, I was looking up.
Um, I think 100%, we have to address students' mental health, 100%. We have to address the negative academic, social, and emotional effects of this past year and a half, absolutely. And I think it starts with the masks. How can children get back to some sort of normalcy if they're still masked? And I disagree that we should just wait for the state to tell us what to do. Because, like you said, Jackie, they're constantly moving that goalposts. What if Cuomo says, actually, let's wait until the vaccination comes out? Actually, let's wait until-
I thought of that like a half hour ago, and I didn't even want to bring it up, because that's gonna bring a three-hour discussion, okay?
Right.
But that could conceivably happen. We could be mandated to make children not-
But this doesn't change that.
But-
Yeah, it doesn't change anything.
I think that it is our job as parents and as a board to advocate for the kids. And that's what I want to do, I want to advocate it for the kids to get this mandate removed. And I think the threshold should be whether or not we're in a state of an emergency. If we're in a state of an emergency, then there's a mandate. If we're not in a state of emergency, then it is up to the parents.
Can't argue with that. Can't argue with that. Who else wants to say something? All right, so guys, what are we doing? Okay. I had those two edits, nobody else had another edit, correct? Okay. All in favor? Two, three, four, five, six. Opposed? One, two, what did I count wrong?
No, abstaining.
Oh, you're abstaining? I'm sorry. And one abstained, six to one. So we're gonna adopt this resolution. All right? Any other business that we have to deal with? Okay, I'm sorry, Jonah.
Yeah, I'd like to propose a resolution that we look for a new medical director.
Uh, you don't need a resolution for that, and that would be an executive session item. All right, somebody want to second that? Okay. Yes, you want to second that? Okay, now we can discuss it. Uh, anybody think it's a good idea, bad idea?
Well, like I said before, I think it was, you know, we're all looking to return to normal. We're looking to remove the masks. And I think that the current medical director is somebody that's just on the other side. She has a different viewpoint about all of these things. And I think there are plenty of, you know, well-credentialed medical professionals who have a view that's more in line with this community.
Okay, anybody else have a comment? Sure.
I will say that, being on the task force, I listened to Dr. Collins some bit, and I, I will agree with Jonah, that I did feel that she was very much on one side. And I think perhaps in this situation, especially since we're talking about trying to get back to some normalcy, we may want to look for somebody who's maybe a little bit more in the middle. I did feel she was very, very mush to one side.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other comments?
I think as, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. I think as a board, we've actually, in the past, for those who've been here a while, have had specific instances during the pandemic where we heard a different perception. I had a different perception. I didn't, I didn't think she was on the other side, and there were cases where she advocated for things that I actually thought were not on the side of doing, I don't know which, you know, I don't know which side, you know, I don't, you know, whatever. The, the overreaction or whatever you want to call it, right? I, there were things that I thought she was actually more appropriately referring to. So I, I, I can't give example, I can give an example, but I probably can't do it in an open session. But I think other board members would, would agree with me, who have been here for a while, would agree that there have been instances where we heard that Dr. Collins specifically recommended things that were different necessarily than, than, you know, the state might have recommended, even though we couldn't go with that way. So I just will say that.
Steve. So, I mean, we use a medical director for a great many things. One issue, which is going to, I think, be a thing of the past, is not what I would determine that we should just, because of this one issue, I want to run out and find a new medical director. We use medical directors for a variety of things, on a variety of issues, which are extremely important to the children of this district. And while I'm not opposed to, in general, vetting, you know, saying, hey, do we think, you know, I don't know how long this doctor has been our medical director, how many years, why this person was chosen as opposed to anyone else. I don't know any of those, those reasons. And I'm not opposed to necessarily reviewing that from time to time as a general policy. But ultimately, the district over and over has, has basically taken the position that we're just gonna follow whatever the state guidance is, whatever we're required to do. And that's what we've done thus far. And so I don't think our medical director is going to be the one making these decisions. It's gonna be whatever the state hands down. If the state says you gotta wear masks, we're gonna wear masks. If the state says you don't have to, then we don't have to, right? I think that's been the, the way that the district has acted thus far, regardless of what the medical director has specifically said on one issue or another. So I think, I, I don't think we need to go out and, I, I don't support a resolution saying you should go out and seek another, another medical director. But I'm fine with the concept of every now and again, vetting our medical director or any other contracted group or, or person.
Okay. I'd just like to say that I disagree that we've always kind of gone along with whatever the state says because we didn't go along with, you know, with the state said we could use barriers instead of six feet. We didn't go along with that. So there are decisions that we're making at a local level about this issue and returning to normalcy. And I'm assuming you guys all consulted the medical, medical director when the issue of barriers versus, you know, you know, three feet and barriers and six feet came up. So she could weigh in on those issues, or he, if we have a new-
I, I, hang on, hang on, I want to say that. I says, I, I gotta be very honest with you. I wouldn't care what the medical director said in regard to three feet versus six feet. I would take my guidance from the CDC, from the State Department of Health and the Westchester County Department of Health. One person does not make a difference regardless of who that person is, because you could find 10 different doctors and get 10 different opinions. So I don't think that's a decision that is vested in the medical director advising the board as to what's appropriate. I think that comes from a lot higher places than one person. But that's the way I think it is.
And, and the legal interpretation from the district lawyers of that guidance, right? And the interpretation of the vast majority of districts in our county and, and region, right? I mean, we followed the same exact interpretation as all of Westchester and Putnam School Districts.
Yeah.
Along with the, what our attorney, our school attorneys had, had advised, right? Not necessarily because the medical director said this or that, but because that's what the legal guidance was, and that's what every other district in our county and, and region had done.
But you reduced the distance and went with Plexiglas before the state guidelines changed.
When the legal opinion of our school attorneys said, yes, we think this is, this is okay.
That's the way it was done.
Not before that. Not before that.
Not because our medical director- It was based on, it was based on guidance that was provided before direction was provided. There was other guidance out there that said three feet was sufficient. I don't remember where it was. I, I don't remember where it was. But all right, let's, let's get this issue resolved. Cheryl?
Yeah, I, I, I want to just follow up on something Steve said about the medical director does many more things than just this one thing first. I think that's absolutely true. The medical director works in concert with all the medical providers and health providers in the district, the nurses, the athletic director, who we have a new one coming in, so some continuity there in the district, I think is important, works with providers and aides to some of our most medically fragile students in the district. So I think we need to think about the relationships that have been built and the larger role that the medical director plays. I also think it's somewhat, you know, chilling to think that if the medical director has said at one point, support, in support of masks, and the last time I heard her say that in a reentry task force meeting was when we were still under a state of emergency. And I think she was following New York State guidelines at the time. And one would expect the medical director, I think, to be conservative with that issue. So I, I, I'm not in favor at all of sort of saying, because the medical director doesn't like, you know, wants to mask our kid, or wanted to mask our kids last year, that she's, she's not the one for us. I think that there's a larger picture of last school year. I haven't heard her say anything about that going forward. And again, I also think in my experience on the board, we have not, you know, ever been driven by medical director advice. I think there's a larger sort of cohort of, of advice that comes in. So I would not support this.
All right, last call. Yes.
Um, I will say that I think there are more issues than just the masks. But I know that we're not supposed to discuss that.
That's correct.
So, but I just want to put that out there that we could discuss that.
This was only discussed in terms of the mask.
Yes, but there are other issues.
Okay. Stuff could come up in executive session. Okay. Okay, so Jonah made a mission, a motion, it was seconded, all in favor? One, two. You're voting on, he wants to make a resolution that we could, we could look, we should look for a new medical director. Did I correct? Say that correctly?
It's directing the administration to begin a search for a new medical director. So we'll, yeah, we'll have the continuity for now. We're not going to be going without a medical director. We have the contract. She'll be doing the job that needs to be done until we can find somebody that's more aligned.
I don't want to be without a medical director.
We're not.
So all we're doing, we're going to review.
He wants.
It's, it's to direct them to make a change, not to review, but to make, direct them to make a change. So regardless of, no review of what they're doing, what this person is doing now, not a review, this person would now be out, right? That's my understanding. No, not, not immediately, right?
I mean.
Wait, time out.
It's a direction.
The motion is to direct the administration to start a search for a new medical director. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Now, any discussions regarding that, because they are contractual, go into executive session. They are not here in a public forum, okay? This is only a motion to direct the administration to start a search for a new medical director.
Prior to any further discussion.
That was my.
Yeah.
That was my, going to be my question.
But I can tell you that this will be further discussed in exec because it is contractual and particular person. Well, it's not personnel, but it, it's, it's an executive session discussion. It's not a general discussion.
Because my understanding is that that means a new medical director means this person cannot be our medical director once a new one is found. Is that?
That wasn't in the motion.
We, we, we would then have the opposite.
That wasn't in the motion.
To replace the medical director.
Well, wouldn't.
And that discussion would be in executive.
Can we table this until after we have the exact conversation? I just, yeah, I'm sorry to do that, but I just think there's so many, there's so many questions about even what the motion means. And, and, you know, if we make this decision today or we make this decision in an emergency meeting, I mean, even though the next meeting is technically scheduled for August thirty first, you know.
Lisa said that they had to do an RFP and that it was going to take months to find somebody. So if we start the process now, then maybe we'll have a candidate by the time school year starts.
You could start the process without a motion if you agree to it in executive session. You don't need a motion to do that.
Yeah, right, but we're directing the administration to do that if they wouldn't otherwise do it. We can direct the administration to take an action.
The, the administration works at the direction of the school board. So if the school board directs the administration to do that without a motion, it will be done.
What do you mean direct without a motion?
You don't need a motion to have someone do a search.
For us to direct them to do something, to act, we have to do a motion to act.
No, we're policy board. We don't manage the district. That's, there's a difference there. This, this, this really went off on a tangent and should not have gone here, okay? We should have known about this in advance and it should have been an executive session item to be discussed in executive session. Because it's come out, we're now discussing it now because we're not, we're going to be transparent, we're not hiding it. But I can tell you that when this motion comes to a vote, I will vote against it because this discussion should be held in executive session. And then based on the executive session discussions and material, the board may decide to direct the administration to do something. And it does not need a resolution to do that. That's, that's what I'm saying.
How would the board direct?
That's how boards work. All right, we were in discussion, discussions closed here? All right, all in favor of motion? One. Okay, opposed? One, two, three, four, yes, no, you know, five, you could abstain, five. All right, five opposed, two abstains. I'm sorry?
I'm in favor.
Okay, six. Yeah, so motion doesn't pass. No, no, it's, it is a executive session discussion now. All right, so anything else? Or comments? I'm going to limit them, not going to be like I was with the public.
Yeah, can I, can I make one comment? So we heard a lot, um, um, this meeting from the public, people saying, hey, we want to know what's on the agenda earlier. I think that's a good thing. We want to be able to give our opinions on things. I think when we have resolutions that we propose, and I, I know we've done this in other meetings as well, but when we propose resolutions and hand out papers and vote on them same day, the public has no real opportunities to see it other than just to hear us say, right, read it. So I, I wonder if we can try to, if we propose something, vote on it the next meeting or find a way to allow the public to see it to be transparent and get the comment.
The, the actual procedures which will be gone over in our board planning session over the summer is that all due respect, you did a great job on you, on your resolution, but we don't do it this way, okay? That should have been vetted through the board prior, through a discussion meeting, through something like that so that everyone could have come prepared to talk about it and question it. We just don't bring resolutions blindly. And, and it's no reflection on the work you did because the work you did was very good. But what I'm trying to say is that that's not the process. Same, same with. No, it's never the process. We don't do resolutions blindly.
Resolution that Cheryl introduced, you didn't give.
That's not going to happen again this year. I promise you that, okay? It's not, we're not going to entertain resolutions unless it's an emergency, okay? It's not the way we do. There were people here were totally unprepared to talk about these things and that's unfair to them, including me. Okay, I had no idea these resolutions were coming, okay? So how could I intelligently lead a discussion on them without prior information? I can't do it. So that won't happen again. Anything that we're going to put on the agenda is going to be on the agenda. And this agenda was late, that person made a very valid point. The reason it was late, Jeanette, not through no fault of yours, but the reorg meeting agenda is very complicated. It's very long. We had a lot of discussion tonight, which was amazing discussion, and I think it was really good and healthy. And there was no rubber stamping going on tonight at all, except for some of the routine stuff that we have to rubber stamp. But my point is that agendas are prepared in advance, they're distributed in advance. People come prepared to talk about them. That's how we're going to do it going forward, okay? We can't do it this way. It just doesn't work. It's not fit everybody. It's eleven thirty, we've been here for, what's that, one, two, three, four and a half hours almost, okay? And that was after an hour of public comment, an hour plus of public comment, which was over our limit, but was, okay? So I've said enough, I'm sorry.
One last comment. A couple of people mentioned tonight about S, social emotional learning. I just wanted to recognize the fact that at previous meetings, more than one this year, we had very detailed presentations from Dr. Urso, and I think we had another one that was either, I, I don't remember who else was about, but we had, I mean, you know, we've had many meetings. They're just not as exciting and popular for when they're not contentious, right? We had, we had all the board members here. Actually, one of them was at one of the hot topic meetings because people complained that they had to wait for the end of the twenty or thirty minute presentation on social emotional learning before they were allowed.
That's true. That's true. So there's a lot of money invested this year and there are new hires, correct me if I'm wrong, okay? Yeah, there are new hires in guidance, there's new hires in, in psychologists. This is, I'm not going to say plenty of money, but I'm going to say plenty of money is going to be directed and resources towards that goal because the district recognizes that's a problem. You know, what everybody said and nobody disagreed with.
So I just, I just, I just want to, you know, I just want to acknowledge Dr. Urso and her team for, you know, being on top of that. And hopefully the people who were not here for that presentation will, will be able to check the videos and learn about some of the things we're doing and that we plan to continue to do. I don't know that we have all the answers, certainly, and it's a complicated time, but it's not off our radar. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Last chance for a board comment. All right, motion for exec session, Rob. Judah, all in favor? Yay. Uh, actually, this is particular personnel. Because we don't vote on that. Let me end the meeting and you could, you could ask me a question after the meeting. All right, we're done. Thank you, everybody at home. Thank you, everybody here and.